Be counter to my oath. I don't recall if it was in that conversation clearly that we talked more about the oath, but I said, "What would you have me do?" And he said, "Just do it and let the court sort it out." And I said, "You're asking me to do something that's never been done in history, the history of the United States? And I'm going to put my state through that without sufficient proof? And that's going to be good enough with me? That I would put us through that, my state, that I swore to uphold both in Constitution and in law?" "No, sir." He said, "Well, that's my suggestion would be just do it and let the courts figure it all out." And I didn't use that exact phrase, but that was what his meaning was, and I declined, and I believe that was close to the end of our phone call.
And again, this took place after you had recently spoken with President Trump and told him that you wouldn't do anything illegal for him, is that right?
It wasn't days after, obviously it was days after, but a few days had gone by.
But you had told President Trump you would not do anything illegal for him.
I did, both times.
And you told Dr. Eastman that you did not believe there was legal support to justify what he was asking, but he still wanted you to do it and effectively let the courts work it out?
I'd been warned, "Don't say things you think," maybe he said, but I do remember him saying that the authority of the legislature was plenary and that you can do it. I said, "Then you should know that I can't even call the legislature into session without a two-thirds majority vote. We're only 30-plus one. There's no way that could happen."
But in your view, what he was asking you to do would have violated your oath to the Constitution, both the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Arizona?
Yes, sir.
Did you also receive a call from U.S. Representative Andy Biggs of Arizona on the morning of January 6th?
I did.
And what did Mr. Biggs ask you to do?
I believe that was the day that the vote was occurring to each state to have certification or to declare the certification of the electors. And he asked if I would sign on both to a letter that had been sent from my state and/or that I would support the decertification of the electors, and I said I would not.
Mr. Speaker, on December 4th, 2020, shortly after your meeting with Rudy Giuliani and other allies of President Trump, you released a statement publicly addressing, quote, "Calls for the legislature to overturn the 2020 certified election results." The statement is very straightforward in explaining the, quote, "breathtaking request", made by representatives of President Trump, quote, "That the Arizona Legislature overturned the certified results of last month's election and delivered the state's Electoral College votes to President Trump," unquote. Why did you believe, as you wrote in this statement, that the rule of law forbid you from doing what President Trump and his allies wanted you to do?
Representative, I'm sorry, I should be saying, Mr. Chairman, Representative Schiff, there's two sides to the answer. One is, what am I allowed to do and what am I forbidden to do? We have no legal pathway, both in state law nor, to my knowledge, in federal law, for us to execute such a request. And I am not allowed to walk or act beyond my authority. If I'm not specifically authorized as a legislator, as a legislature, then I cannot act, to the point of calling us into session. Some say that just a few legislators have plenary authority, and that has come as part of all of this discussion, I'll call it. But so to not have authority and be forbidden to act beyond my authority on both counts, I am not authorized to take such action, and that would deny my oath.
In your statement, you included excerpts from President Ronald Reagan's inaugural address in 1981. The newly inaugurated president told the country, quote, "The orderly transfer of authority is called for in the Constitution, routinely takes place as it has for almost two centuries, and few of us stop to think how unique we really are. In the eyes of many in the world, this every four-year ceremony we accept as normal is nothing less than a miracle." Tell us, if you would, Mr. Speaker, why did you include President Reagan's words in your public statement?
Mr. Chairman, Representative Schiff, because I have a lot of admiration for Ronald Reagan. I had the opportunity of going through his home with one other person and walking through, and I have a lot of admiration for him. When he pointed out, which is, I have lived in other countries for a period of time and have visited a few countries and during election times, the fact that we allow an election, support an election, and stand behind the election, even in the past when there have been serious questions about the election, and then move on without disturbance and with acceptance, that we choose, we choose to follow the outcome of the will of the people. That will, it means a lot to me, and I know it meant a lot to him, and so I, we included that.
I now want to look even more deeply at the fake elector scheme. Every four years, citizens from all over the United States go to the polls to elect their president. Under our Constitution, when we cast our votes for president, we are actually voting to send electors pledged to our preferred candidate to the Electoral College. In December, the electors in each state meet, cast their votes, and send those votes to Washington. There is only one legitimate slate of electors from each state. On the sixth day of January, Congress meets in a joint session to count those votes, and the winner of the Electoral College vote becomes the president. In this next segment, you'll hear how President Trump and his campaign were directly involved in advancing and coordinating the plot to replace legitimate Biden electors with fake electors not chosen by the voters. You'll hear how this campaign convinced these fake electors to cast and submit their votes through fake certificates, telling them that their votes would only be used in the event that President Trump won his legal challenges. Yet when the president lost those legal challenges, when courts rejected them as frivolous and without merit, the fake elector scheme continued. At this point, President Trump's own lawyers, so-called Team Normal, walked away rather than participate in the plan, and his own White House Counsel's Office said that the plan was not legally sound. Let's play the following video produced by the Select Committee.
My name is Casey Lucier. I'm an investigative
Mr. Best Pitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and of course, Ms. President. I am delighted and honored to bring forth our pastor who will be doing the invocation today, and please join me in welcoming Serena Churn, the pastor of High Street Baptist Church. And Pastor Churn, it's good to see you again. Thank you. Please stand, and following the invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? Lord, make us instruments of thy peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Oh, Divine Master, grant that we might so much seek to be consoled as to console, not so much to be understood as to understand, not so much to be loved as to love, for it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, it is in dying that we have eternal life. Lord, we thank you for this day. We pray for our mayor, our city council, officers, and members of this city. Lord, we pray not only for our city, but we pray for this Commonwealth state in our nation and our world. God, we pray that even in this meeting, that you will give those who will make decisions for our city, give them the wisdom of Solomon, the courage of David, the prayer life and devotion of Daniel, the leadership of Moses, the prophetic insight of Isaiah, the strength of Samson, but most of all, the love of Jesus. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Churn. Welcome to everybody to our afternoon session today, and I want to again welcome everybody here today, and it's important that you be here and those viewers, those who are watching us on RV TV, we're honored that you're with us today. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM, and Sundays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right, the announcements for the City of Roanoke are as follows. We're seeking applications for the current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, one vacancy, and which we're looking for an architect. The City of Roanoke Finance Board, one vacancy, and we want that to be a citizen at large. The Roanoke Public Library Board, two vacancies. And for any and all of these vacancies, we can access, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application or for any of the above-mentioned vacancies. And let me say that this council always encourages citizens who want to come forward and be a part of a board or committee to help us as we govern the city. And it's important that we say that, we encourage that. I had a chance to visit a forum or debate last week, and one of the questions that some of the people were asking about, how do we serve on a board or commission? And we're saying, just apply. You can apply through the clerk's office, you can call them, or you can apply online. It's a very simple process, but we encourage citizens to step forward, and it's very much appreciated because we have a lot of work to do, and we need your assistance. All right, at this time, we're down to item number two, which is the Presentations and Acknowledgement. And I want to ask, first of all, I want to say, I want to ask Chief Holback to come, but I want to welcome him back. He's been away for a while, and it's good to see him back in uniform and looking well, like he's ready to run a mile or two. So, welcome back, Chief. We have a recognition today of the city's Swift Water Rescue Team, and I want to share something with you about this group of people. On May 27th, Roanoke Fire and EMS responded to a report of a subject trapped in their vehicle in flooding water. Multiple units were assigned to this incident, including the Swift Water Team, for a total of 17 people that were on the scene. The vehicle was caught in fast-moving water, actively moving with the current. Swift Water Personnel Safety entered the water, made contact with the patient, and brought her to safety. Swift Water Rescues are one of the most dangerous operations that the Fire and EMS Department engages in, and the positive outcome is a testament to the training, skill, and dedication of our Fire and EMS employees. So with that being said, I'm pleased and honored to have Chief Holback to come and recognize that group.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Lee, members of council, we greatly appreciate the recognition for this event that occurred on May 27th. It was truly unusual circumstance for us in the fact that it was really something that was unprompted, in other words, we had no knowledge of this event coming. We had heavy rain in the headwaters up in the Tinker Creek and the Hollins area that kind of flooded that area, and then all that water came down Tinker Creek. And this individual not being aware that 13th Street was flooding proceeded down 13th Street, got caught in the high water, and lifted the car up and started moving the car towards the creek. Somebody called 911, and we got there very quickly. Engine 14 was the first on the scene. Boat 6 and the staff from Station 6, who are our Swift Water Team, concentrated there, were deployed as well. And then shortly after, Engine 14 realized what was going on, called for additional resources. I will say that our Swift Water Team has a long history, going back to 2005, and our team is trained every month and prepares for these situations, and it's a testament to their passion, their dedication to doing what they do that really saved this individual's life. She was, as you can imagine, she was very frantic and screaming, but we had certain things we had to do to make sure when we entered the water, we were doing it safely. The water was rising, we had debris coming down, the car was moving, and once the team got there, got set up, they were able to enter, get into the water, set up the safeties. The person was so frantic, couldn't put the personal flotation device on, that's how frantic she was. Once they got up there, they attempted it first time, weren't able to get the person out, then attempted the second time, pulled him through the window, and put him low in the raft, and then they really had to paddle hard because then they were going up current to get from where they were back to 13th Street to get to safety so they could actually effect the rescue. I do want to recognize those individuals that were there that day, and they are, and some of them are here, not all of them are here due to vacations, and some of them are actually on overtime that were working that day. But the people who are here is Lieutenant John Kaler, if you'll come forward, Captain Chris Decker, firefighter, now paramedic, Emily Turner, she just got her paramedic, congratulations. John Sawyers, Jordan Weeks, Todd Whalen, Lieutenant Adam Trout, First Lieutenant Mike Smith. Am I missing anybody? Nope, I'm good. Huh? Garrett Fair? Yep, come on up, Garrett. Sorry, I didn't have you on my list. Apologize for that. I will tell you, it takes a team effort to effect a rescue like this. I will say that John Sawyers and Jordan Weeks were actually in the boat that actually pulled it out along with Cameron Lee, who was not here today, Lieutenant Cameron Lee. But it is a true effort because everybody plays an important role in this, not just the people in the boat, but the people actually set up downstream safeties so if something goes awry, they can throw the bag to them and pull them to safety, to a person just making sure everything is right. So we greatly appreciate your recognition here, and these individuals volunteered for the team. It's not something I assign, it's something they are passionate about, and they volunteered for the team. I will tell you, with the exception of personnel cost, the equipment cost, the boats, the motors, and everything else are funded through grants, so it doesn't come from local taxes. Very fortunate to get that done. We have a very strong program. We partner with Roanoke, I mean, the City of Salem and Franklin County on this team, and this team not only provides support to our Roanoke area, but it's gone, it goes everywhere in Virginia that it's needed, and it's actually gone outside of Virginia. So when we have major events, this team is deployable, and they do, they just do wonderful work. So on that, I appreciate your recognition.
Members of council, anybody have any comment?
I just have one comment.
Mike Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you all for your valiant efforts in bringing our resident to safety. I don't, I couldn't, was it one or two?
Initially, we thought there was a child in the car, but it turned out only to be one.
One, okay, I couldn't, well, thank you for your efforts for that, in bringing everybody to safety or bringing her to safety. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? You sent your, um...
I just want to say that I'm really proud of you guys, and you continue to prove to everyone around our city and surrounding areas that you guys are the best. Thank you, and Emily, congratulations on your promotion.
Yes, yes.
She has worked hard for it.
Yeah, very hard. That is a one-year program of dedication and hard work, and it's, you know, it's over 1,000 hours of training, and we actually had eight people that have passed so far, and we're very proud of them.
And working full-time as well.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Y'all have a good evening.
All right, we're now down to item number four on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the item. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second?
Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
You can call the hearing of citizens.
Okay, all right, I missed that part, and it wasn't on purpose.
Because she's ready.
All right. All right, we're now down to the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters, and Madam Clerk, this moment, this time is set aside as a priority for citizens to be heard, and if deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to the council. All right, Madam Clerk, has any citizen signed up?
Yes, we have three citizens signed to speak today.
All right, the first one is...
Your first citizen is James Humble. Humble.
James?
Okay. Next person is Sean Ayers.
Sean?
Hello. My name is Sean Ayers. How to start this? 1228 Hamilton Terrace, voter, Republican Party, all state local. I believe I'd spoke to Mr. Best Pitch or Mr. Cobb like a week or so, maybe two weeks ago. Excuse me if I'm not getting it right, but whoever answered me back, y'all definitely have my vote in the next election. But anyways, what happened was I was working for a temp service, and our job was to repair the streets through the city of Roanoke, so I'd kept hitting the same thing, the same pothole, every day with the, like, getting off to Greenway and everything, so anyways, I called it in, we went to fix it the next day. Monday, I was fired, so just like to bring that up, it was like last Monday. So anyways, I mean, that's how the city of Roanoke works. But anyways, but because of that, I just wanted to get up here and complain that my tax-paying dollars are going to waste to fund a crew of men that will go and slack off most of the day. That'd be like street maintenance, they'll go hide and everything else, and then I got fired for calling in something, and we fixed it. So besides that, I just wanted that to be known. I think these guys need supervision anyways because they'll work two hours out of a whole day's worth of work, and nothing will really get done except one job, so I think that's a misallocation of city funds. Now, on to my last bit of business, which is kind of cohesive. I think that I'd like to bring it before y'all to see, well, besides them getting a supervisor to actually make sure they're working, is that the street of our beauties in southeast Roanoke, there ain't no stretch that goes on for about 10 feet probably, that hadn't been chopped up, sawed up, or anything. I'd like to bring it before y'all to... supervisor to actually make sure they're working, is that the street of our beauties in southeast Roanoke, there ain't no stretch that goes on for about 10 feet probably that hadn't been chopped up, sawed up, or anything. I'd like to bring it before y'all to see that the street of our beauties could possibly be resurfaced or repaved, all in general. So I came down here to lobby for that, and that's all. And if it was you that I spoke to, thank you, or if it was him about getting that whole fix, I appreciate it, y'all got my vote.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Dirk. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council and Administration. All-American city, neighborhood strong is what I'm speaking on. Is Roanoke an all-American city? I believe that government is a three-legged stool. To safely use this stool, you need a leg for business, a leg for government, and a leg of voice for neighborhoods, the folk that live in the city. Many of Roanoke business owners do not live in Roanoke. Many of Roanoke city workers do not live in the city. The residents, the residents, the people that live in the neighborhoods, the people, whether they rent a room or an apartment, whether they own a single flat or a mega mansion, whether they own a high-tech business or do yard work, whether they have lived in Roanoke for generations or applying for U.S. citizenship, those are the residents in Roanoke. And those residents need to be heard. You, you are, members of City Council, you have the key to the city. Show me your key. Do you have a key to the city? You have a key to the city. And your key, your voice, will open doors. Listen and learn from the residents of the city. Hire city employees that practice equity and empowerment that, and practice acts of kindness, just because, because of mental or physical or economic limitation, but just because, because they're people. My daughter opted to go to high school at William Fleming, and I served on the PTSA and chaired what was called then the Business and Technical Education Council. And one day, a group of experts, I called them suits, came onto the Fleming campus to tell us what Fleming needed to do. The parents knew what needed to be accomplished. The students realized the goals that needed to be reached. Even though some of the adults and students wore different traditional clothing and bib overalls, the parents and students knew what needed to be done. The experts needed to listen to the people that were there. They would have benefited a lot. You, you have the key to the city. You hire the employees that bring skills beyond what is currently available. You hire experts and ask them to listen to the people who live in Roanoke. If you don't have time to listen and learn from the people of Roanoke, ask your city staff to listen. And ask the Department of Community Engagement to engage with the residents. You have, you have the key to the city. Is Roanoke an all-American city? Is the city a three-legged stool? We have business, we have government, but do we have strong neighborhoods? I live in a neighborhood called South Roanoke. By the way, please have the Office of Economic Development call me. I've left voicemails and written emails and no one has called yet. Neighbors in South Roanoke have concern for traffic in our neighborhood. Three projects are impacting traffic. One on Avonham is we know that vertical tree height slows traffic, and the city had four trees, four or five trees cut down recently. So hopefully, you're going to replace those trees, not with ornamental trees, but with tall empowering trees. Second is the repurposing development of Famous Anthony's located in the South Roanoke Village. The neighbor that's developing this lives in the neighborhood. He found out about our neighborhood meeting and opted, asked to attend, and he did come. The neighbors have concerns about this project. We have concerns about the traffic, we have concerns about the vertical height, and when we hear traffic studies are being done, we wonder about what's, about those traffic studies. And we realize that economic development is not including traffic and parking needs. So that's something that really needs to be addressed. We need to, want to be heard because this petition is going before BZA in July. Another third is Carrion. Carrion is being slated to come before the BZA. Carrion is such a good neighbor, and we're excited that they're allowing their employees that live in South Roanoke to walk and bike to work. They asked for a called meeting with our neighbors in South Roanoke, and their counselor came, their Bowser and Associates. Is that five minutes?
Go ahead, go ahead and finish your statement.
Well, that it's traffic, traffic, because they're building an additional parking garage, which we applaud, and we had comments about the parking garage, but most of the people that attended the called meeting were concerned about the traffic that is going to impact our neighborhood. And we're asking that the city, you support industrial development, you support economic development, you put in industrial parks, and Carrion VTC is a huge economic generator in the city. And ask that you look for a designated, an area, an entrance into Carrion, or help with traffic circles, or some way to positively impact the traffic that's going to have on our neighborhood and in Carrion. So I believe that economic development, that we all need to look at how we best can serve Carrion because Carrion has served us. You have the key. Roanoke should be an all-American city. Roanoke should be neighborhood strong. Keys open doors. Open Roanoke's doors and hear the voice of the people in the neighborhoods. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dirk. We'll forward your...
So I had some people from our neighborhood that came to support me today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll forward your concern, unless members of council got any thoughts or questions on that? We'll forward that to the city manager and your concerns. All right? Okay, that concludes all of our speakers.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, all right, thank you. We'll now go to the item number five, which comes under our regular agenda. Public hearings, we have none. Petitions and communications, none. We have none today. Item number seven, the reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. And I'm pleased to call on our city manager to introduce the briefings that we have today.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two briefings, and we're going to begin with a briefing on some discussion regarding improvements around Orange Avenue, and then the second briefing will involve an update on the American Rescue Plan Act funding, also as referred to here locally, the SARS City Strong effort as well. So we'll start with the Orange Avenue, and I think, Dwayne, are you gonna begin? I don't know who's kicking, Mark's gonna start us off. Very good, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city administration. We want to take a few minutes today and share some initiatives that we have been working on for a number of years along Route 460 and Orange Avenue. As you are well aware, there are three major regional connections for the Roanoke Valley, I-81, 220, and 460. We've been very fortunate through VDOT to have a lot of work going on on 81 to address the issues that we're all aware of on the interstate. VDOT has also been very successful in allocating funding, and they're working on some projects on 220, both south of the city toward Franklin County, as well as some spot improvements in Vodatot and on to the north toward Allegheny. And then that leaves 460, and the city staff has been working for a number of years to try to identify funds for some projects there. We have been very successful in working with the Transportation Planning Organization. They have allocated surface transportation block grant money that we have successfully in a couple of instances leveraged for smart scale money through VDOT. We also plan to apply for more smart scale money this year. The TPO has also afforded us the opportunity to use some of the STBG money to leverage for projects that we'll apply for this summer. And so with that introduction, I'm going to ask Dwayne Darden and Josephus Johnson-Cromer to come up and talk a little bit about the projects that we have going on along the 460 corridor, again, both funded and projects that will apply for funds this summer, and looking forward to some continued success in that regard.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Mark. And as a way of starting here, I would like to give Mark some kudos because with his leadership on the TTC and the TPO and council members that are on the TPO, that's the reason that these projects are getting funded. Okay. So by way of introduction, everybody knows the Orange Avenue corridor, so we're talking specifically about the area from Gainsborough out to Blue Hills Drive. Many have driven that corridor, many have also experienced traffic and congestion on that corridor. I'm one, I know several of you have done as well. And there are needed safety and congestion improvements that need to be done. The good thing, as Mark alluded to, was that the funding for this program is 100% state funding. So it's called VDOT Smart Scale Funding, and we'll get to that in just a few minutes. So let's talk about the SARS Study. So VDOT sponsors what's called Strategically Targeted Affordable Roadway Solutions. VDOT loves their acronym. SARS is one. But since, let's see, 2007, there's been approximately 80 SARS study across the state, and within the VDOT Salem District, there have been five, the first of which we're going to talk about today on Orange Avenue. The second is, there's two on I-81, northbound and southbound between exit 140 and 141. The fourth is I-81 and I-581. It's the exit 141 to 143, and as you well know, the construction is ongoing for that particular project. And then the last is an I-581 and Orange Avenue interchange study, and that's getting ready to get started. So lots of improvements for Orange Avenue and, in particular. So there is, so the SARS Study starts with VDOT staff, and they introduce consultants, traffic engineers, safety engineers, maintenance specialists, and they're all targeting improved safety and reduction of congestion. They use leverage money from the planning and research funding to help identify projects that go forward through the smart scale process. Let's get to that one. So what in the world is smart scale? And you may not be able to see it up there, but at the very top, smart scale, it says "Funding the Right Transportation Projects in Virginia." And that's, to be, to meet smart scale funding, you have to have a corridor of statewide significance. So obviously, Route 460 is one, I-81 is another, 581 is another, but all of those meet that. And then they have to have a need that's identified in the statewide multimodal long-range transportation plan. That's known as VTREN, you don't have to get lost in that. But that's the two criteria. And then factors these projects are evaluated on. You've got safety, congestion mitigation, accessibility, environmental quality, and economic development. Those are the five criteria that all the projects that go through SARS and any other study get evaluated against. Smart scale is open every two years, so on even-numbered years, so 2022 is the, when the applications are open, they are due August the first of this year. The city has been awarded, there have been four rounds of smart scale to date. The city was awarded projects in round three and round four, and Josephus will talk about those details in just a few minutes. But we're going to take a look at round five that we're getting ready to apply for first All right, so I need to give some kudos here to RVTV. We worked with their staff. I said, I don't know quite how it's going to be really the best way to try to explain what it is we're trying to do. So they went out and did high-definition drone video and then overlaid the plans on top of this, so it should be fairly simple to understand exactly what's proposed. Now, let's get our bearings first. So obviously, this is 581 and Orange Avenue. This is the former school administration building. Gainsborough's behind us. Washington Park is over to the left, and you've got Burgland Center over here. So everybody got where we are now in terms of this location on Orange? All right. So as this moves forward, I'll let it run here for just a second. So there are a couple of things that we're trying to do. So as you come off this offbound ramp onto Orange Avenue, the problem that we're trying to solve here is the weave, is what the traffic engineers call it. The weave, trying to go across multiple lanes of traffic, especially if you're trying to get into this turn lane to come downtown. Right? So this would include a stop here, it would actually be a signalized intersection, and the signal would be coordinated with Gainsborough and with Williamson Road. And there would also be pedestrian accommodations, that's the other problem we're trying to solve here. High-visibility crosswalks and push buttons on the particular traffic signals. Let's let this run just a little bit further here. And we're going to hop across to the other side of 581. All right, so here's the Burgland Center parking lot. This is the Econo Lodge, and Sheets is over here, and we're on the other side of 581 now. So everybody understand where we are? Okay, so we're going now northbound on 581, and this off-ramp, again, the weave, as we know it well, trying to get off, and especially if you're trying to go northbound on Williamson Road, is very problematic. And you'll see there are dual rights, which is going to add capacity to this turning movement. When this signal is coordinated, that allows additional green time on the through movement of Orange Avenue. So that's why you've got additional capacity here. This green and blue will go away. That's green space, and this pavement will go away. Now, we're going to transition on, let's make sure we understand where we are. This is Sheets. Let's see, Burgland Parking Lot, this is the Magic City Ford. So we just come off the interstate now, and we're getting ready, you see what's existing. You've got two through lanes, you've got a right turn lane and a left turn lane, a single. So let's see what we're talking about here. All right, immediately, you see, you've still got the two through lanes, you've got a right turn lane, but you have two left turn lanes onto Williamson Road. So that, again, adding capacity, trying to mitigate congestion along this corridor. And we'll let this play just a little while longer here. And as we get closer to it, you can also see the pedestrian accommodations, high-visibility crosswalks on all the legs of the intersection, and you'll have push buttons in addition. You've already got push buttons, but the signals will be upgraded so that it functions a little better. And then the other thing worth noting here is as we go around, you will see that you've got two through lanes, you've got a dedicated right and a left turn lane. And let me let it play just a little bit further here. And you can see that you now have two through lanes going northbound, and you had a, have a dedicated left turn lane onto Carver Avenue. Now, people turning into Sheets will use that same turn lane, but it's not for Sheets, let's be clear, that's for Carver Avenue. Right, Luke?
Yes.
All right. We'll go on to the next portion of the project. Okay, this is 11th Street. Now, we've already passed the Kimball and Plantation intersection, we've already passed the Hollins Avenue, Hollins Road intersection. This is 11th Street. So where are we here? You see this merging arrows. This is where three lanes drop back to two, and you've got a left turn lane here. Now, what's critical, and this is one of VDOT's, what they call innovative intersections, it's called a through cut, which is a complete misnomer, because you can no longer go directly through the intersection. You also cannot turn left out of this intersection. The reason is, we have crash history, that this, when people are merging, they're not necessarily paying attention to people turning left out of this intersection here. So that's why this is, this intersection in particular is a safety improvement. Now, what are people going to have to do? So they're going to have to go right, make a U-turn, and come around. So it's a right-in, right-out only, both here and this direction as well. Now, VDOT has proposed this also on Route 220, south of 419, where the Home Depot and Lowe's are. You'll have to go right, go down, and turn around, and come... You'll have to go right, go down, and turn around, and come back. If I remember correctly, VDOT talked about the capacity addition is the same, 90% the same as adding a third lane in both directions. 90% capacity is adding a third lane in both directions. Now, back in the early 2000s, the early 2000s, there was a plan in play to add a third lane on Orange Avenue between 11th Street and 24th Street. My recollection is, we were talking about $70 million to add a third lane. And that, again, is early 2000s numbers. We'll talk later about that. Put a pin in that number, that $70 million. We'll talk later about the cost of this particular project. And remember now that we're talking VDOT scoring, and we have to meet those five criteria to get funding. All right. Moving on here to Gus Nix. So you see a lot of pink, and we'll start with the pedestrian accommodations here. So right now, you've got sidewalk on all four corners of Gus Nix and Orange. However, there are no crosswalks on Gus Nix or Orange. And if you can imagine trying to cross Orange Avenue, that's a lot of lanes of traffic, and you don't have any good accommodations. What this plan would do would, you've got crossing here, you've got pedestrian refuge. You've got a crossing to the middle, you've got pedestrian refuge. You've got a crossing here, you've got pedestrian refuge. That will allow pedestrians to safely cross this intersection. That's the number-one concern here. But in addition, you also don't have the through movement. So people would have to go right, make a U-turn, and come back. And this is exactly what is happening out on Orange, on Route 220 there between Lowe's and Home Depot, where you're removing a signal phase, going from four to three, and that would give you 25% green time that you could then add back to Orange Avenue through time. So we're trying to keep capacity moving through the corridor. And the other thing worth noting here is you'll see there's a dedicated right turn lane coming out of the Antique Mall and Dollar General there that doesn't exist currently. So these are all proposed projects. Wait a minute. There's one more thing here that I want to share, and I don't know if I can do this. This right turn lane is going to be extended, or excuse me, the left turn lane will be extended on this particular one, so you've got more capacity. All right. King Street. So all the projects that I've talked about so far will be applications this fall with council concurrence and city administration concurrence. The projects that Josephus is getting ready to talk about, they're at King Street and Blue Hills Drive, are funded projects. They've already been through. They were awarded in round three or round four. So I'll turn it over to Josephus, and he can kind of talk through his projects now.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. And as part of the innovative solution that Dwayne was just talking about in improving the traffic along Orange Avenue, reducing congestion, and improving on safety, and also providing pedestrian accommodation. If we look at, this is King, and, let me just click here. This is King and Orange Avenue intersection. What we're trying to do here is, the main thing that we're trying to implement here is utilizing aisle cuts and through cuts. And I'm talking about a lot of cuts here. To explain, you know, to get an understanding of what the through cut means is, it prohibits traffic, through traffic from any side street onto Orange Avenue. What that means is, if you're on Main Street, Orange, this is Orange going through, and you can actually make a left turn onto, and the business is on one side, you can go through the intersection straight forward, or you make a right turn. But whenever you're on a side street, an example, King Street, you cannot make a through direction or through traffic approach to the intersection on, from the side street. You have to either make a left, or you make a right turn. So what that helps, does is, it helps minimize conflict at the intersection. And the same applies to when we get to Blue Hills Drive. It helps minimize conflict. It improves the efficiency of the intersection. It allows more vehicles to flow through the traffic at that intersection, and also it improves on safety. And so if you're on King, which is one of the side streets, and you want to get onto, you want to go on the other side of the road to cross the intersection, you would have to either take a left turn, or you take a right turn, and you head towards an aisle cut. And what that means is, I will show that to you in just a second. So if you're on King, and you want to get over to the business section back here, you would have to make a left, a right here. Let me go back. I think it doesn't show that. So if you're on King, you make a right, and then you go down onto, this is what we call the aisle cut. I think Dwayne showed it in one of the presentations. There's an aisle cut that allows you to make a left on here, or you make a U-turn, and onto this road, and then onto the business. So all we're trying to do here is to minimize the conflict, because there are a lot of conflict at this intersection. Probably 32, but that could be reduced onto 18. So it minimizes the conflict, and it helps improve with the signal, timing signal for the intersection. Also, there's pedestrian improvement in this area that, similar to what's on Orange and Gus Nix, with pedestrian accommodation here to cross, and there'll be pedestrian signals here to help with conveying or movement of pedestrians from one point to the other. So there's an island here, there's an island here, another island here, another island here. So with that, it's, this is kind of similar to what's going to happen over on the Blue Hills Drive intersection. So again, that's the aisle cut there, going through. Heading towards the county. And it's very similar to King. The same scenario here. One thing I forgot to mention about, I need to go back, about King that I'd like to talk about, is because of the development here at Sheets, this single left turn lane will be a dual left turn lane because of additional vehicles to this intersection, based on traffic study. So it's going to be a dual left turn lane. So the intersection will be a little bit wider than it is right now.
White lines on Gus Nix.
And back again to Blue Hills Drive intersection with Orange. The same applies here. And some of the left turn lanes here, let me just mention, some of, both left turn lanes are going to be increased in length to accommodate more vehicles, and also to be able to see opposing traffic coming from the other direction. And you have also the crosswalks here with islands. And again, coming off from Blue Hills Drive, it's going to be two right turn lanes and one left turn, no through traffic. If you have to go to, come to, from Blue Hills Drive, you have to get over onto the other side of the road. You have to go down and then take the aisle cut and come over and up to the side of the road. So that's the limits of the city projects, which is the Blue Hills Drive intersection with Orange, Blue, the King Street intersection with Orange, and the aisle cuts in between. So the existing project that we have right now, which is, we have here, which involves the pedestrian improvement, that is, I can't see the color, okay. The Orange and King intersection and Blue Hills Drive, this is the funding amount. And then we have three other projects, which is on Sebel Drive and Ickery Road, the aisle cuts that we have to do, which has a budget of this amount. And we have the aisle cuts and through cut improvement on Orange and King, which is the budget amount, and likewise, Blue Hills Drive, which is the budget amount here. So, and we anticipate construction 2025, 2026 for all of those projects. So we're working towards there. Very important things that we have to do in order for us to meet this obligation, because we'll have to have public involvement processes with businesses, with residents in this area, public neighborhood groups, and we have to involve them, have a conversation, and present part of the, well, the studies to them, and also, as we go through the design process, we'll have to engage them so that we can have a good dialogue with them, and we can have a better project in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll wrap it up real quick here with one last slide. So the three projects that we haven't put applications in yet for, we know, Orange Avenue, 11th to 24th, that's an estimated $24 million. That was applied for previously, and it was not funded. It was just below the line for the last round, round four. Orange and Plantation, we think that's going to be about $4 million. The Orange and Williamson, we don't know what that's going to be yet. And as I said previously, round five is due August the 1st, and we would know spring of 2023 if something was going to be awarded. So with that, we can take whatever questions that you may have.
First, I just want to say thank you for presenting this in a form that we can understand. You know, that was pretty clear and concise. Normally, we get a piece of paper with some maps drawn, and we're still clueless, but that was really good. I think we have one question from Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Hi. I wonder if you could go back to the presentation on King Street?
Sure.
And going towards Blue Hills.
The video?
Yes, please. And that is so helpful, being able to see the video. Yes.
Great use of technology.
Yes.
All right. So King Street is the one you're looking for.
Okay.
All right. So this is King Street.
Okay. So just go back a little bit more. Towards Blue Hills.
So you can see towards Blue Hills?
Okay. So right there, at the end of the, that turn. The traffic coming from Blue Hills to King Street backs up all the way down there. How are we going to avoid that spot right there?
You're talking about this traffic here, right?
Yeah. Coming from Blue Hills to turn onto King Street.
Okay. So this left turn lane will be extended further, because the left turn lane here, the existing turn lane stops somewhere back here. That would be extended further back here.
Okay.
To accommodate more traffic.
Okay.
More vehicles, and then minimize, you know, the congestion in that area.
So the turn from Kings, from 460 to the other side, it's going to be past the next spot right there? Or is it before that? That's what I don't understand.
So this...
If I'm going to turn into Wells Fargo, where is the turn for that?
Wells Fargo, this one?
Correct.
They can go straight across.
But the traffic is being blocked there for people that are coming off from Blue Hills to go down onto King Street, to turn into King Street. That is my route.
So they would have to turn, they would have to come from here, down, and use the aisle cut here and back this way. Or if they can make it to this left turn lane, because we haven't gone into the design yet, this is just a study.
Yeah, because the traffic, I have taken pictures.
The traffic going east won't be able to turn over.
No.
Because there will be a block.
Correct.
From the traffic going west.
That's a valid point. We'll bring that up.
Yes.
Again, this is where.
It's beautiful, but it's blocking the turn.
Yes.
That's it.
Thank you.
Dwayne, wouldn't you, you would pick up, there would be some efficiencies picked up by removing the signal phase as well, correct?
Correct.
So some traffic will move through as a result of that, that is today sitting there waiting for a turning movement.
Correct. And that's, again, moving from that full-phase signal to a three-phase signal, and you're adding capacity on the through time. Good question.
I'm just not happy with, that you're not able to continue straight into the McDonald's. You know, my breakfast is in jeopardy now.
The one point that I didn't bring up before was that $24 million that we talked about for this project, compare that again to what we talked about earlier, that $70 million of adding a third turn lane, or a third through lane. And that's early 2000s number. That could be well double or triple that at this point, 20 years later. So that's, we're trying to stay within VDOT's funding formula, so these things get funded. But that does mean we have to give up some concessions, unfortunately.
It looks good.
Thank you. This is really great, and I'm really excited to see the safe pedestrian crossings. So it also, but it also appears to me that Williamson Road is probably not a road I need to ride my bicycle on. Is that accurate?
Williamson Road?
No, I'm sorry, Orange. Or Williamson. We're working on Williamson.
Williamson's a different type. Orange is not one that I would recommend riding on, just because of the traffic volume and the speed.
Right.
I mean, I've ridden on portions of Orange, but I would not ride it.
Part of the reason I raise that is because, and I can't remember where it is along here, we have a bicycle store, Cardinal Bicycle. And, you know, and it, you have to take backroads, but there is access to the Greenway through some backroads. I'm just thinking in broader terms about that kind of access, but, and was curious if VDOT, at any point, is considering that, because that would be another adjustment to this effort.
Sure would. Yeah. VDOT would not encourage cycling on this particular street.
The other question I had was on the 11th and 24th Street. You said that came in just under being approved for funding.
It did, and one of the other folks can probably speak better to that, Mark. I don't know if you can.
Do we have any insight as to why it came in just under, or anything we can do to strengthen that in the process going forward? Because this would be Smart Scale.
Yes.
Mr. Cobb, that's a really hard question to answer. In the VDOT Smart Scale scoring process, every project is scored against the projects that are submitted in that round of funding.
Right.
And when the funding runs out, this project was just below that line. So we feel like that it has a good opportunity this time with the other tweaks that we have made. But again, in this cycle, it will also be scored against the project against the projects that are submitted in this cycle.
Right.
So there are no guarantees.
Right.
Um, we've had some, uh, brief conversations through VDOT with the CTV member. This is a project that is absolutely on their radar screen. They certainly understand the importance, uh, through our communications with the TPO to the CTV in Richmond. Orange, Orange Avenue, Challenger Avenue, Route 460 is well on the radar screen. So we are hopeful that, uh, there is some opportunities present themselves that this one will be funded this time. But it's almost impossible to know exactly why or what might happen this time.
And is this full, if this were approved, would that be full, um, smart scale funding? Or would there be a local match?
All, all of these projects are smart scale funding. So state and federal funds, no local match required.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, um, Ms. Moon Reynolds and then followed by Ms. Price.
Um, King Street, if you could, is that King Street there? No, that, uh, go to King Street for me, please. And if you enlarge it a little bit, I can make the point. Yeah. Okay. Um, my question is when we talk about the new sheets that's going to be put in and this project doesn't come on until you say 2025, I believe. I'm concerned about the traffic and the impact when you see how the streets are set up now. When I look at King Street going, I guess, and correct me in my directions, north and south. If, if the sheets is already built and there's traffic trying to come out to go on King Street to go, uh, to come north to turn to go on 460, uh, will there be any adjustments in that to, uh, to, um, I guess widen the streets? Or this, the cars are going to be backed up trying to cross over? Or they're going to take a chance and come out? And you may have an accident where they're coming north on King Street. How you plan to handle that? Or is there any talks about that?
Well, um, the, with the, the sheet intersection, with the sheet development here, I mentioned during, you know, the presentation that this single left turn will be a dual now to accommodate more traffic onto Orange to increase capacity. So, um, during, um, during construction, there, there will be traffic control measures that we have to put in place. We haven't decided that because right now what we have is just a study of what we want to do. When we get to the, to the design process, that's when we'll be able to determine certain limits and what needs to be done to make this to happen. So as it is right now, it's difficult to, to, to establish something. We know a few geometrics about what, that this would work. But how it's going to work, how big the island is going to be, the island for pedestrian crossing is going to be, what's the size of the, 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 the lane width? That has to be determined when we do the actual design.
So there's no plan yet?
So there is no plan.
There's no plan.
There is no plan.
There's no plan yet. There's a whole study.
Except that Sheets will install the dual left as part of their development.
Okay.
That's not part of the project.
Okay, okay.
So as soon as.
That's what I want, yeah.
Open, they have to construct the dual left coming from King on.
Okay. That makes sense. And the other piece is you mentioned, um, that you were looking to do a through lane. Because if I'm, if I'm looking at this correct, there is no through lane for, for Villa to get to her McDonald's. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Villa would have to actually go to the right and go all the way up and turn by her Wells Fargo.
No, that's Wells Fargo.
So she, she doesn't have to go that far.
Okay. How far was she going?
And she kind of turns around.
Okay. I was just trying to see how far she would have to go out of, out of, out of her way. In case she tried to do something crazy trying to get to her McDonald's. Okay.
Yeah, that would be safe.
Yes. I just try to keep her safe. All right. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Price, did you have a question?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I, I just, uh, want to make a comment. As we can tell from the questions and observations that have been made from this presentation, I just wanted to acknowledge, you said at the very beginning that RV TV was able to use their technology to put this presentation together. I had seen a demonstration of this earlier this month, but to see it in practice certainly is a tool that obviously is very beneficial to you guys. But also, you know, as you're going through these studies and, and hearing input certainly does make a difference uh, when you eventually get to the planning stage. So I just wanted to acknowledge and commend RV TV for, um, something that is certainly very, very user friendly and can make us all understand exactly what it is you're looking for. So I just wanted to thank you guys.
Yes. Thank you so much because we would not have had any questions. We would have said thank you. That would have been the end of it because we would not have had a clue. But thanks to this technology, like Ms. Price said, that was very helpful. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, ready for Star City Strong?
I'm not going to use the big hand in the presentation, so I'm sorry. If, if I, I did, I'd probably end up pushing the wrong button.
We back to.
No, no, I've got the presentation, but no, uh, no pretty, uh, RBTV didn't fly anything in or anything. I don't have the big, uh, I don't have the big hands, so.
That should be standard. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I think we may have to up our game a little bit, so.
Yeah, you all have to do better.
Well, thank you. I wanted to, um, provide everyone with, um, a brief update on kind of where things are relative to Star City Strong. And again, as I mentioned earlier, this is the, um, the name that we've given, that, that you all have given the American Rescue Plan Act, um, funds. Actually, it was the same, um, name that we used during the CARES Act as well. So I wanted to provide an update. Of course, you all get weekly updates on how we're progressing with this, but this is an opportunity for us just to pause. It's been about a year that we've been actually implementing the projects. Gives us a chance to pause and sort of talk about those a little bit, um, more detail. And also to talk about kind of phase two of this effort. So I'm going to start this by, um, going back a little bit in time and just kind of getting everybody grounded again on where we have been with this and, and then move us forward. So back in March 11th of 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law. And that provided, among many, many other things, $350 billion for state and local government. $25.5 billion went to each of the 50 states plus Washington DC. And then additional funds went to the states based on the then unemployment rates that existed. So Virginia got $25.5 billion plus additional funds associated with its unemployment rate. That was separate and apart from what the localities received. So, um, out of that $350 billion, $130 billion went to, uh, cities and to counties. Every city and every county in the country received funding out of this act, which as far as I know is the first time ever that the federal government has provided, um, direct funding assistance to localities, cities and counties. For us, for metropolitan cities, $65 billion was designated and the determination on how that was divided up was based largely off of a, um, altered kind of CDBG formula. So they used a formula similar to what they use to, to divvy out the CDBG funds, um, a little bit differently, but ultimately did. Virginia actually, because cities function both or carry some of the functions as both cities and counties, unlike in other, um, parts of the country, actually received, um, a second kind of increment attached to that as well. Um, and so that's why the funding that we received, even though the counties were based off of population, why our funding exceeded what, um, the funding was that Roanoke County receiving is because in many instances, again, we do what, um, both cities and counties do um, here in Virginia. That act, so those dollars, there was a list of eligible uses that were identified in the act itself. That included revenue replacement, offset of COVID impacts for small businesses, industries, households and general economic recovery, and premium pay for essential workers and investments in water, sewer and broadband. It was that specific and about that limited on detail. They then turned it over to the Treasury. Treasury actually had a craft interim and final rules. Two items that came out of that that are of particular note that tie directly into this eligible use is also for qualified census tracts. So these are census tracts where there is a significant amount of poverty present in those census tracts. There was a much longer list of a presumption of eligibility. So basically if it was a project that actually benefited the residents or businesses located in those census tracts, it was going to be presumed as eligible versus on a case by case basis, as in many of the other instances. Obviously in the city of Roanoke, that covers a, a fair amount of our population, which is beneficial for us as we went through identifying projects. The other thing that the interim, uh, the final rule also added was that funds from the ARPA, um, act could be used in it, in municipalities and counties efforts and state efforts in the reduction of gun violence. So those were two things of significance that came out of, um, the act or the, the rule. The rule itself was hundreds of pages, as you can imagine, but those were two things of significance. In addition to eligible uses, it's, it's important to note um, at least two of the, um, things that, uh, the funds cannot be used for. Again, these were in the act, not in the rule. So these were specific in the act as approved by Congress and signed by the president, which is the funds cannot be used to offset tax reductions or delay in tax increases. So in other words, a community couldn't come in and say, hey, we're going to actually lower taxes by X amount of dollars. And it's okay because we've got ARPA funds. Can't do that. It's a violation of, of the act. The other is it cannot be used for public pensions. Um, apparently there was some grand fear at the federal level that, um, all the states were going to run out and fund and shore up their state pension programs, which of course, um, none of them did, none of them would have. And of course, none of them were allowed to, um, under this act as well. So I'm going to now switch, that's kind of the background. Now I'm going to switch over into kind of the response that we provided. And in doing so, I want to thank the mayor and vice mayor for having served as the chairs of the advisory panel that I'm about to, um, talk about in just a moment. And the more than 30 members that participated. And then on the staff, I want to thank Angie O'Brien and Wayne Lefwitch, both who have been helping us actually implement these, um, projects as they move forward. Roanoke received, uh, 645, uh, 600, 64.5 million dollars, um, in two deposits. The first came in the summer of '21 and the other came just a few weeks ago. So we actually now are in possession of all 64.5 million, um, of the dollars coming from ARPA. This is in addition to around $16 million that we had previously received, um, through the CARES Act. This is also in addition to $51 million that the school division received separate from ours. So ARPA funding also provided funding directly to schools, school divisions and school districts. In our case, Roanoke City Public Schools received $51 million of ARPA funding alongside the 64.5 that we received. Additionally, the airport received direct funding. Transit agencies received direct funding. There was an increase in CDBG funding, home funding, ESG funding. Utilities received direct funding and many other dollars that were a part of the ARPA act, um, as it was approved, very similar to the, the CARES Act as it went through as well. One significant difference between the ARPA and the CARES was CARES was designed for immediate response. And therefore the window of opportunities, you all remember, that we had to actually spend those dollars was very fast, very short. The, uh, ARPA was intended to provide that kind of response, but over a longer period of time. So all of the funds that we've received must be obligated by, um, December of 2024. And the spending has to be complete by December of 2026. Um, I'll come back to that perhaps, um, as we go forward. But basically that's the, the timeframe that has, um, been provided. As, as I alluded to in July of '21, so just a couple of months after, we were notified of what we would receive. The council appointed an advisory panel of 35 area residents and organizational representatives. They met, um, pretty regularly over a period of a couple of months. Um, and in September of 2021, that panel made recommendations to, to you all. And ultimately you concurred with those recommendations. The continued emphasis for the advisory panel, much like it was with the CARES Act, was on response and recovery. But the difference was that there was an increased prioritization on resiliency against similar disruptions. And again, I think you'll see that as we go. I know you remember that from when we presented the information back in September, but you'll see that as we go through some of the projects as well. Also at that same time, council determined that balancing the budget would not be dependent on ARPA. So there are communities out there, um, some quite large cities that actually took basically all of their ARPA money, declared it as lost revenue. And there's a formula that you have to go through with the Treasury. And they simply put that into their budget for that year. They basically just shored up their budget for that year and moved on. The council opted not to do that and instead ensure that all of the funds that we received or the majority of the funds that we received would go directly to businesses, individuals, organizations that could help the community, um, recover from COVID and prepare, um, for similar shocks in the future, as well as taking care of some very targeted things that we'll talk about, um, as well. Also, council wanted to ensure that these funds would advance transformative actions. These were not intended to be, um, just something that took care of an immediate, um, opportunity or issue and then kind of forgot about it. These are things that were hopefully going to make a difference well past the time at which, um, the funding was authorized for. The panel recommended, um, prior, or panel recommend, recommendations prioritize prosperity and health and wellbeing by making investments in people, places and governance. So you'll remember that from the September presentation, that there was discussion in people, places and governance. And I'm going to go through those as well. I'm not going to read on the slide, but you can see the goals that the advisory panel established for each of those areas. Again, for people, places and, uh, governance. Further, the recommendations identified a collection of what were referred to as opportunities, uh, for investments for each of the priority areas, for people, places and governance. Um, within these, and in turn, um, those became either short term, small dollar, what were referred to as recovery investments, or longer term, higher dollar, what were referred to as resiliency investments. And you'll recall hearing those referred to by the panel as the big lifts. So those were the large projects, um, that they were intended to move forward. On the screen in front of you are, um, the opportunities that were identified by the panel for people. And those ranged everywhere from COVID-19 mitigation and vaccination to again, addressing gun violence, workforce, uh, development, food insecurity, substance use disorder, um, as well as health outcomes, economic outcomes and educational disparities. So that list were the opportunities that the panel had identified. And is what they built then their recommendations for the big lifts or for the resiliency, um, expenses or expenditures, as well as the expenditures associated with the recovery side of things. So what that turned into were, um, obviously a list of investments that were being made. Again, some of those were short term and immediate. Think for example, the awareness campaign that was put into place about the vaccine clinics, um, that were being set up all across the community, as well as the vaccine clinics themselves, the staffing that was necessary, the, um, uh, the information that was put out about those, in some cases, the facilities for those. That was an immediate response, um, still responding to COVID itself. That was some of the short term types of investments. But many of these investments, again, were the longer term. So again, I'm going to mention a few of these and, and discuss these in a little bit more detail, um, as we go along as well. So one of the people investments, obviously, as I mentioned, that was added through the Treasury's guidance was, um, was being able to use some of these funds to respond to gun violence. And so part of what was recommended by the advisory panel was indeed use of the funds, um, in order to actually further the efforts of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. And as you know, there have been many grants as well as outreach workers that are associated with youth and gang violence and so on. Nearly all, well, all of those have actually, with the exception, I think of $75,000, actually have been funded either through our ARPA dollars or through ARPA dollars that were received by the state. Remember the state's getting the other money that I mentioned and in many instances have passed even more of those dollars through to the locality. So all of the, the funding, again, for the outreach workers, the, um, the many grants that have gone on, all of those have come from, from that as well. There's also funding, as you may recall, in that category, set aside for, um, law enforcement overtime, for special units, for additional lighting in select areas, as well as additional cameras in select areas. Those are a part of that, that funding as well. So that's just one. I'm not going to go through all of these. I'm going to highlight a few of the, uh, of the more substantial ones. Another one that I want to highlight is the Star, what's referred to as the Star City Works Initiative. This is a program actually with Western Virginia Workforce Development Board. And this was a, um, an initiative that was awarded, funded at $3 million, at $3 million. And I want to pull and just read very quickly, um, some of the information that is from, from that. So this, this program is envisioned to do, um, a couple of things. And most importantly, what it's designed to do is to connect the businesses and industries that are in our community right now that are in the high growth, high paying kind of sector. So think of healthcare and wellness, construction, those types of things, who are frankly, um, needing workforce. They're looking for folks in order to keep growing and keep doing what it is they need to do. So that's one side of the equation. The other side of the equation are, um, folks in our community that are either unemployed or underemployed and connecting those two. So this will actually be identifying where the gaps exist between where those individuals currently are, between where those individuals currently are, as well as where those businesses need them to be, and then setting up the educational components, either to get the credentials and/or the training that are necessary to quickly move people into those higher-paying jobs. While doing that, there will also be these wraparound services that ensure that things like childcare, transportation and any number of other things aren't impediments or barriers to folks actually taking advantage of those job training opportunities. On the business side, it's also helping them actually have some funding so that they can do some on-the-job training as well and be able to take on that risk without financial risk, because this will assist in covering that. As well, there's also a component of this that actually has a fairly extensive outreach to youth in our community to expose them to these same professions and occupations and the training that's necessary in order to proceed in getting us there. So that's a program that is underway right now and will be taking place over the next two years. Obviously, as the Workforce Development Board further develops that and the details, we'll get more of those details to you, but I wanted to mention that one as well. Most of you are familiar with the LEAP Food Systems Hub. This was another project that was funded to address food scarcity and the impact that COVID had, it seems like, a very, very long time ago. But you may recall that when COVID first started, many of our food pantries here in the community actually exhausted their supplies and sought additional supplies. There were new food pantries established. Much of that just illustrated what you all have known for quite some time, which is this challenge with food access in some of our neighborhoods. LEAP has been long a part of that solution, and this is to expand their efforts in going forward. They received $2.5 million and have been investing in that as we have for a number of months, actually. That includes expanding their local food hub in the West End. So if you're familiar with where the West End market is, they actually have acquired a building across the street, across Patterson. They are currently working on that building. Actually, there were some state officials here yesterday, or last week, to welcome that effort as it moves forward. They'll be staying in the facility where they're at currently, but they'll be able to expand their community kitchen in that location and then actually operate at a larger market and actually have a retail component in the front of that building as well. So that's one piece of that. But it also includes an expansion of the LEAP mobile market, both in the number of mobile markets that are available, but also therefore, the number of days, as well as the number of hours that it can run across the community as well. It also will include expansions of the urban agricultural program. You may or may not know that LEAP took over all of the community gardens from other organizations, so they run all of those gardens. This will allow them to continue to expand those and establish additional partnerships with folks. This will also include enhancing the community garden urban agricultural network in the community, as well as expanding and enhancing the collective and community-based urban farm that's located on 10th Street in the northwest. So all of those are a part of this effort. And then finally, a piece, well, another part of it too is to actually expand a piece of the Grandin Farmers Market, actually. You know, right now, they use the parking lot. This will actually provide shade and some other features that are in that location as well. And then finally, it will also include an expansion of a new program that they refer to as their Harvest Bucks. Some of you are probably familiar with the program they run now, which allows folks that are SNAP recipients to actually double and in some cases, triple the benefits that the SNAP funding provides so that they're able to access the same quality, fresh food as others might have, even though they're actually doing so on a limited income with SNAP. Harvest Bucks will be alongside that program as well and allow even more folks access to those services. So those programs, again, are already underway. And again, you'll hear more about those as things advance forward. The Roanoke Valley Collective Response. So again, many of you know that for a few years now, there has been a collaboration of literally hundreds in our region who have actually come together to craft a blueprint to respond to the opioid epidemic present in the community, as well as other substance use disorders. A piece of that was, that was lacking, and you may recall, they came and actually presented to you all, was that they really felt the need to move beyond this loose affiliation and collection of folks into a more formal arrangement, including actually standing up a formal entity and having staff associated with that. We have used the American Rescue Plan Act funds to do that. So for the next two to three years, staff is now available. They're actually staffed out of the regional partnership, or sorry, the regional commission. The regional commission agreed to be a partner in that effort, so that's where they're housed in that. I will say that this is a regional response, meaning this responds to Roanoke County, city of Roanoke, Salem, Franklin County, the whole surrounding area. The staff is only being, is paid for through this program. So it's the city of Roanoke that actually stepped up, established this staff, and that staff is now implementing those programs that are in their blueprint. And of course, this will pick up off of the, all the litigation settlements that you are a part of and that you actually saw. City Attorney's guest editorial recently in the newspaper discussing how that will be funded. So these were startup dollars to get them up and running. And from this point forward, the proceeds from litigation over the opioid issues will be what funds not only the operations, but also the interventions that will be put into place as well. And then finally, in this category, of course, there were a number of individual assistance programs, just like in the CARES Act. This was run through our DSS, so this was for folks who actually were experiencing challenges with paying bills and other kinds of expenses. They made application through DSS. And to date, there have been 463 of those applications approved for folks. And we're nearing the end of the $500,000 that was established for those as well. So those are some of the people investments that have been made already. I'm going to switch here to the places side of things. Some of the opportunities included small businesses, affordable and safe housing, parks, open space and recreation, tourism, marketing and innovation and entrepreneurship. And just as was the case with the people priority, on the places priority, the panel identified a number of areas where there could be kind of quick sort of infusions of assistance, as well as these longer big lifts that were more transformational in nature. I'm going to start with one of those quick items, which were the small business grants, just like in the CARES Act. We made available through the EDA, through a partnership with our EDA, small business grants that assisted businesses who were attempting. In this case, unlike CARES, CARES Act was because they lost business. So this was a way for them to make up that lost revenue. In this case, this is actually things that they're doing in order to actually make their business more responsive to the new sort of post, if you will, if we can say post-COVID environment. So these are things like being able to better facilitate curbside delivery or other kinds of activities, outdoor dining, those types of things. To date, there have been 93 applications received under that program. One of the other projects, one of the larger projects that was funded is the Eureka Recreation Center replacement. $8 million of the ARPA funding is going to replace the Eureka Recreation Center. This is, of course, a center that's over 50 years old and actually was a center not only of after-school or out-of-school recreational activities, but also was a place where actual virtual classrooms were held during the time at which schools were out of session. And so exhibited the importance of this center beyond just what you would have expected with those as well. I'm going to come back to this item when I talk about kind of phase two as well when we move forward with that. And the last one I'm going to highlight is actually the Northwest Roanoke Hub. This is the largest, and by the advisory panel is the number one project, which is the Northwest Hub, which is focused around access to food, as well as financial wellness. This is the grocery store. So this is the discussion of trying to get a grocery store in the area. As you all know, we have both tried to pursue some private property in the area to further that along and actually had some fairly involved conversations with Goodwill. And at this point, it appears we're going to proceed forward in a collaboration with Goodwill, reimagining their campus and their building in order to actually accommodate some type of grocery operation in that area. Have a meeting actually tomorrow morning where we'll continue to advance that conversation. So a lot more to talk about on that item, but that item as well is progressing. And I'll shift to the last priority category, which was governance. Some of the opportunities that were identified, of course, were lost tax and fee revenue. Again, Treasury provided a formula that you, as a locality, are to use to determine what you can account for as in lost revenue. We have done that. So we accounted for revenue that we would have otherwise probably earned had COVID not occurred or taken place. However, as I mentioned, those dollars were put back into this program. We didn't identify those to capture them and balance the budget. Instead, we identified those really to give some additional flexibility in their use, but they are in a part of the program. Other opportunities included facility upgrades and PPE, as well as programs around rebuilding and strengthening trust that I'll talk about in a few moments as well. I've already mentioned that one of the ways we spent, or one of the ways we've invested that is to identify lost revenue based on those formulas, but we did roll those dollars, for the most part, back into the Star City Strong Recovery and Resiliency Fund. We are working currently on a project to expand our Wi-Fi outreach so that the goal and the objective is, is in many of our facilities, think of parks or libraries, residents will have the same kind of access to Wi-Fi outside of the walls as they do inside the walls of the rec centers or of the library. So that, again, we had stories during COVID when school was out of session in virtual where there were literally kids sitting outside the walls of the buildings, getting as close as they could with their phones, trying to take tests. So this is an effort to actually push more of that access outside of the walls so that it's more usable and more able to be friendly for that activity. We also, as you remember, we had a whole series of increases in addressing essential employee and public safety hazard pay, as well as bonuses. So those included the first sort of phase of getting our minimum wage up to $15 an hour. It included a number of bonuses to our fire and police officers, first in the form of hazard pay and then in the form of recruitment and retention bonuses. Matter of fact, right now, there is, the next wave of those is about to go out, which was $1,500 per public safety employee with it to the tune of about $700,000 of bonuses that were going out to those individuals. So those were some of the governance items. So that's a really quick summary. And again, I know there's a lot more detail that you all have been provided. We certainly can provide others more detail on any one of the projects that I mentioned of what has taken place in the first year so far of these expenditures. You may recall that the first phase identified investments for 75% of the funding. So at the time that the advisory panel made their recommendation, we actually had received 50% of the funding, but they had identified specifically how 75% of the funding could or should be used as well. We have now, as I mentioned, received all of the funding. So for the second year, so for the remaining 25%, what we're doing is using the opportunities that the advisory panel has already identified, so those that I just went through, as well as the overall guidance that was provided from the panel, as well as from you all in making the recommendations of how to allocate the remaining 25%. And again, that includes maintaining an emphasis on transformational initiatives and projects. So what I'm going to do over the next couple of slides is actually kind of walk you through what the recommendations are for the use of this second phase of funding. And again, remember, these are grounded, and I'll kind of highlight where, these are grounded in the opportunities already identified by the advisory panel and within the guidance that you all have previously provided. I'm going to start by saying that 25% of the 64.5 million equates to 16.125 million. Also, in phase one, there was 6.875 million identified for governance projects, those projects I mentioned that fall under that governance priority. We're able to repurpose quite a bit of those dollars because thankfully, the expenditures that we had anticipated or feared associated with COVID largely were borne by the state. The state used its ARPA dollars to cover much of what was necessary to respond immediately to COVID. So that allows us to actually repurpose some of those dollars. So for these purposes, I'm looking at, I'll be describing as we go through here, the use of $23 million. So that's that 25% plus the money that was funded for the governance in phase one. I'll highlight where that, those dollars are already committed on the governance and then as we go through this as well. So the first thing I am recommending that we do is that we actually withhold $5 million of that $23 million and withhold it until June, so this time next year. The reason being, even though I know we would all like to absolutely believe that we will never utter the words COVID again, I doubt that that's likely to be the case. Just today, actually, the area started vaccinating youth, young children with vaccinations in preparation of what will likely be, again, additional waves as we go forward and go through. So don't know what lies ahead in the next year, so certainly would recommend that we withhold $5 million so that we can continue to respond to the needs of the community, either in, again, vaccination clinics, awareness. We may need, again, some kind of quarantining among employees that we need to cover, pay, those kinds of things. Again, for one year, so we can kind of evaluate where we are. If it becomes apparent at that, during that period or at the conclusion of that period where we no longer need to retain those dollars, that we are indeed beyond where, we're beyond at least the immediate response to COVID, then what we're recommending is that we actually use those dollars for water or stormwater infrastructure. This aligns with the governance recommendation that came from the panel for both continued response and recovery, as well as infrastructure. The water project would be a project that I've talked with you before about, which is the Water Authority has sought some additional funding from the state to replace a series of two-inch galvanized lines in the northwest part of the city. Two-inch galvanized lines are inadequate for fire flow, and they're really old in terms of being able to get reliable, it's safe, but get reliable water to homes. This would add to that. This would add to what they're going to, what they would be able to do. So that would allow even more projects to be done in that area, even more fire safety being brought into that area and reliability as well. Stormwater infrastructure, you all know, we have, the stormwater utility has literally hundreds of millions of dollars of backlog to projects. This would just work to chip away at that. So that's the first recommendation, is to withhold that $5 million, at least for that first, for that next year. That leaves $18 million, of which then, we're proposing that $5 million go toward emergency homeless services, sheltering and temporary permanent supportive housing. So this is to respond to homelessness in the community. This is in addition to the expenditures we've already made, both on individual grants to service providers and to doubling the number of outreach workers that we have in place. This is linked to the implementation of both, or this should be linked to the implementation of the strategic plan to end homelessness, which is currently being updated by the regional agency that oversees that. And it should also include $150,000 specifically dedicated to the Ram House and its efforts underway right now to relocate. I think everyone knows that the Ram House is attempting to relocate in a building that they have gotten under contract, and they have secured private donors to accommodate the majority of that move. This would close that, close that gap with it as well. So that's the, that's the second piece. And again, this aligns with the recommendations from the advisory panel around the people priority associated with homelessness. If that's approved, that leaves 13.8 million. With that, we're recommending that $2 million be used for the match of the $16 million that the General Assembly just recently passed, and I believe the governor is ready to sign on the budget, which will go toward the shared lab space, which is the Johnson &amp; Johnson-operated lab space with Virginia Tech, Virginia Tech, Carillion and VTC, and Carillion itself. So this is obviously the group that actually did, for this entire part of the state, much of the testing, actually, of the COVID tests that went on. But more importantly, this is actually used to translate research that's going on in the research lab into commercialization and additional economic opportunities. This aligns with the advisory panel's place recommendations for innovation and entrepreneurship, and that leaves 11.8 million. We are then proposing from that that $1 million be provided to Park Roanoke for capital maintenance. This is due to revenue losses. So you may obviously recall that with the emptying out, if you will, of the office buildings, office buildings, of course, in downtown are our monthly parkers. That's where the majority of our receipts come from, from our parking operations. Anytime we have receipts over what costs are, those are used as retained earnings to pay for capital maintenance of all of our facilities, our garages, as well as our parking lots. Those dollars are down. This would actually replenish those dollars. And it aligns with the governance recommendations for lost revenue. That would leave $10.8 million. We're then recommending $2 million for deferred outdoor park maintenance. As you all may recall, we've been able to do two different funding tranches, the first with CARES Act, and that was really focused on our trailheads. So if you remember, a lot of the trailheads where our greenways are located were repaved, for example. That came out of the CARES Act because of the increase in outdoor recreational activity on the greenways. And then more recently, we were able to actually take some non-ARPA funds and general funds and actually apply those to similar outdoor deferred maintenance. So that's where a lot of the basketball courts that are being redone, that's where the playground equipment that's being replaced, is all coming from that. And we want to continue to address that backlog. This aligns with the places recommendation for parks, recreation and open space. And that leaves 8.8 million. We are then recommending $300,000 to DRI. This is for their downtown ambassadors program that they are working to get underway. So this is a program that actually will be piloted over the next two years, mostly funded by the businesses in downtown and by DRI, where you will actually have, a company will come in, and a company will actually employ individuals who will be deployed throughout downtown, who are there, if anybody's been in a large downtown, you'll see folks running around with kind of the T-shirts on that say, you know, I'm with downtown Fort Worth, or I'm with downtown Greenville, or whatever it might be. Those folks are there to help people that need assistance, tourist and otherwise. But they're also cleaning up litter, they're taking care of plants that have been planted, and they're also there to be kind of the first set of eyes should something happen that needs attention, so that they can then reach to law enforcement or others that are able to do so. So again, we're recommending $300,000. That represents really a gap in funding for the next two That represents really a gap in funding for the next two years of that program, and it aligns with the places recommendation for tourism marketing and for small businesses. That leaves 8.5 million. This is where I mentioned kind of the previous governance. So I said we could repurpose some of the governance funding. These are the categories of funding that have already been either approved and expended or are already on the list for approval for governance. That included funding for the Financial Empowerment Center, funding for cybersecurity as well as other IT needs, funding for the Hidden and Plain Sight Initiative, funding for those Wi-Fi hotspots that I just mentioned, as well as funding for administrative costs, which are predominantly around software and other, other activities that were a part of that. That leaves 6.25 million. Of that, I'm recommending $250,000 for tree planting. Don't know the details of that yet, but that is associated with the urban heat island mitigation that many of you have seen presentations on, both at the EEAB or other areas as well. And this aligns with the places recommendation for sustainability and climate adaptation as well as the people recommendations for disparities in health outcomes. That leaves $2 million. I am proposing from that, $2 million for the Roanoke River at Wassena In River Kayak Park. This is an outdoor recreational facility, so one of the things that ARPA tries to promote is actually outdoor recreation facility. We actually had sought a federal grant for this project through the USDA, who has its own ARPA dollars that was making available for these types of projects. Just last week, we learned we were unsuccessful in securing those dollars. So we're recommending, and that was actually for a larger project, this was just a piece of it. So we're recommending that these dollars be used and, and it aligns with the places recommendations for regional outdoor amenities. That leaves $4 million, which we're recommending $2 million to go toward the Belmont Fallon Target area for enhancements in that area. That is for a project or projects to be determined as that plan further develops, and it aligns with numerous people and places recommendations. That, of course, leaves $2 million, and we are recommending $2 million for mental and behavioral health care, predominantly through Carillion Clinic, as well as an initiative here within the organization for city employees. This is on top of funding, of course, through CARES Act and ARPA Act. We've previously funded for the Bradley Free Clinic, which will be opening up their new mental health wing, which was in many ways funded in a large degree by funding that came from the CDBG side of the, the CARES Act. But we also provided funding for New Horizons and some others. This is, again, funded toward Carillion's response to behavioral health as well as an employee initiative. And it aligns with the people recommendation for mental health as well as disparities in health outcomes. And that would exhaust the 25% plus the phase one piece that was mentioned earlier, with the exception, again, of the $5 million that we're recommending that be held back in order to accommodate whatever may come in the next year. And then the last thing I'll go, I want to circle back to the Eureka Recreation Center. So as I mentioned, we have $8 million identified in the recreation center, and that process has started. So the, the city has begun meeting with design firms so that we can select a designer. And as a part of that discussion, of course, we've been discussing the ideas of the, the recreation center and what obviously, in light of inflation, what we're learning is the $8 million is not going to deliver what we expect that needs to be delivered. It would not even deliver actually replacement for what we have out there. So what we're actually recommending in this is alongside the $5 million of ARPA funding that we have identified for the Gainesboro Hub, you may recall, we also had a $5 million general fund match. We didn't need a match for ARPA, but we provided a match for, for ARPA, and that was to complement that $5 million for Gainesboro. I believe we can do what we need to do and what we're able to do now in the Gainesboro Hub with the $5 million of ARPA money, and I'm recommending that this, that $5 million of general fund dollars be repurposed to go to the Eureka Recreation Center. So that will provide the Eureka Recreation Center with a total budget of $13 million, which I believe will allow us to replace the recreation center with what that area actually needs in order to replace that 50-year-old facility that is in that location as well. So that's a lot of review and a lot of new ideas coming forward and would be happy to answer any questions that you all might have as well about either of those, about either the stuff we've done or the recommendations we're making going forward. And do remember that recommendations we're making going forward still have two plus three years in order to implement all of those, so that's what we're counting on. But as we've already learned in this last year, time goes very, very quickly as we work on these projects. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Bob. I'm going to recognize Councilman Bestvich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Bob. Wow, that is really a lot. I certainly appreciate the work of the mayor and vice mayor in, in chairing the advisory panels, as you mentioned at the very beginning of the presentation. I'd be remiss if I didn't commend you for your focus on making sure that we get citizens involved, get the input and making them feel like that their input was valuable. And this definitely confirms that what people said they thought we needed to do is what we're doing, the direction we're going. And, and really, along with that, you know, over the last couple of years, we've had a number of people come down here and tell us that instead of putting more money in the police department, we need to put more money in various services, mental health and substance abuse disorder, counseling, housing, job training and so forth. There's a lot of money that you reviewed at some of, in more than one place to address exactly those needs that people were telling us then and also when we talked about the problem of homelessness. And people said, you know, we need to be providing what the homeless need to get themselves in a better situation. And, and there's just so much funding right here addressing exactly that. So I hope that those who have concerns are recognizing that this is a major, major portion of, of what we're using these funds to do as we go forward. You mentioned the individual assistance needs that were coming to the end, I believe you said, nearing the end of the $500,000. That was for rental assistance, utilities, car payments, things like that, that really the essentials for a family to operate, and they were having trouble meeting those obligations because of things directly related to COVID?
Correct, correct.
We're, we're reaching the end of the $500,000. Are we reaching the end of the need?
We are. We've actually, you all remember, if you look in the weekly update, we've actually received probably twice as many applications as we have funded, because in most instances, what we're receiving is they're not eligible. In many cases, they're not in our jurisdiction and they're making application, or they're requesting funding, it's not eligible. For those that are eligible, it has definitely slowed so that, yes, I believe we are reaching the end. And part of that's because along the way, there was also funding made available through the Water Authority to actually address water bills as well as some other avenues and stuff as well. You know, if we found, again, when I say hold back that $5 million, if we found that there, for whatever reason, there was an uptick in that, again, we have the ability to come back to that, those dollars we're holding and reopen that kind of program if it looks like that it would be beneficial.
Well, yes, and, and obviously, if, if there are, is some funding left over from some of these other categories, we can always look at that possibility going forward. The last thing I want to say is, Mr. Cal, you probably lost track of the number of times since you've been here that I've said, can't we find some more money for trees? Can't we plant some trees somewhere in the city? And in addition to the funding that's already in the FY23 budget, we're looking at another $250,000 of tree planting. Certainly addresses the urban heat island mitigation and it addresses the livability and the appearance of our city in so many important ways. So I just want to say kudos. I, I really look forward to seeing those trees get in the ground over the next year or so. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
For Michael's sake, who's back there, probably, it's over the next three or four years, probably.
What's that?
I said for Michael's sake, who's back there, I think, probably for the next three or four years, probably.
Well, I'm sure it's going to take some time, because, you know, we won't have so many people available to plant the trees.
And contractors, actually, that even can make available the trees.
Right.
Absolutely. And, and Councilmember Bestvich mentioned something, too, that I need to make sure that we take. You know, several of these projects, I use the Northwest Grocery, for example. It's a, it's a large dollar item, so that Northwest Hub is very large. It is quite possible, as we go along, much as we have found with the Gainesboro project, is that things change. And, you know, what we don't want to do is reach the end and have dollars that we've not been able to put to good use. So this is also dynamic in that if we find that we're actually having funds that are left over and look like they're languishing, we may come back and talk about how we repurpose those, those dollars. The other thing I should mention, too, because as soon as we get out of here, people will start contacting Angie and saying, so how do I apply for? Most of these programs that we're talking about, there'll be a process to get there and to go through with those. So none of these have, you know, an application sitting there ready to go, other than the ones we've already have underway and stuff as well.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
That's a good point. Make sure we get that part out, Bob. You know, because I can see my phone ringing now in terms of doing that. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. I, I just want to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Bestvich said. Mr. Cal, you know, the, I guess the guidelines for this ARPA money were not as stringent as the COVID relief, but I just want to say that having sat on the, on the advisory panel, I think that you and your team have done a really good job of going by exactly what the advisory panel suggested and recommended happen, and you've actually taken time to go through and allocate as best you could, you know, the funding that we received, because you managed to cover a lot of grounds with the funding that we got. So I, I think you all have done an excellent job, and I think that the advisory panel would be really pleased to see our final results.
And I, and I appreciate that. And we've been providing a couple of periodic updates to the advisory panel, and once I know kind of where everything is after this meeting tomorrow, that's what I'll be doing. I'll be sending out to all the members of the advisory panel a more detailed update, because I think it's important that they understand their contribution and how it's already assisted. And what you all don't have in front of you, there, there's a number of testimonials from folks that have received either small businesses or individuals or organizations that have responded back to us, really what they've been able to do with it. And I want to make sure the advisory panel members see that information as well.
I think it's important to, for people to know that you just couldn't put it any place you wanted to, that these funds had to be spent, you know, in, in certain ways and in particular categories, and you just couldn't just spend it however we wanted to, although we would like to. But you've done an excellent job, you know, allocating the money where we could.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Price?
I, I just want to piggyback what's already been said, and certainly, you know, there's so many issues that have been touched upon and been thought thoroughly through, it sounds like, especially the food desert in the northwest area. That's been an ongoing issue for many, many, many years. The homeless situation that we have in our city. So there are a lot of things here that demonstrates, you know, trying to move our, our city forward. There are some specifics that I won't take time now, but, you know, at a later time, I would like to, to ask you about. Specifically, I'd like to know a little bit more about the homelessness strategies, how that's going to be addressed. And then, of course, you know, I'd, I'd like to get more information about the Gainesboro Hub, how that's going to be played out, and also what that Eureka Park Center is going to look like and getting, you know, input as far as suggestions, recommendations, that kind of thing. So there, there are specifics that I'm sure we can talk about another time, but I just want to commend you, the mayor, the vice mayor, and Angie. I don't know how she does it. She has, I told her she can't go anywhere because she is the keeper of so many initiatives. But thank you, thank you all.
Most definitely. And, and yes, for any of you, obviously, as we meet one-on-one, certainly any of the items either we have underway or the ones proposing, dig deeper in the details, happy to do that with you as well. There was something that you said I needed, I was going to mention, but I can't, I'll, I'll remember it.
It'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, I'm going to go down the line, but I, and I'm going to recognize Councilman Cal shortly, but I want you to say something while you, while you're discussing this now. We continue to get, at least I do, and I'm sure other council members, about northwest and how it's neglected, why we're not doing anything in northwest. And you've already said the chairman and the vice chairman, or the dual chairmen live in northwest. So, but I want you to speak to that specifically, and I think it needs to come from you in terms of where we are and what we've done and, and the emphasis that we talked about in those areas during our, our meetings. And, so if you would, please.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just mention, I'll mention three, three of these initiatives just to kind of highlight that. So again, the, the Northwest Hub, which is the grocery hub, that's $10 million of the $64 million of ARPA funding is dedicated to that single project in the northwest, because again, obviously, it's always been envisioned as being concentrated around, now maybe on the Goodwill campus. The Gainesboro Hub, $5 million of ARPA funding, again, in the northwest in that area. Of course, the Eureka Center that we just mentioned, not only $8 million associated with the ARPA funds, but if, if ultimately you are all okay with it, $5 million of general fund dollars going for a $13 million investment in that area. And that, of course, is separate and apart from the capital program that we have in place, which includes the eventual replacement of Washington Park Pool. And many of the court replacements, Melrose Courts are being replaced right now. Of course, the Washington Park Courts were recently replaced. So, so those dollars are just representative of the investments that are going on in northwest, and that's in addition to some of the other infrastructure projects that are going on. Of course, I mentioned the water line replacement project, which is a grant application, actually, that the Water Authority has, or a loan application that the Water Authority has made with the Department of Health. However, I would be remiss if I said that somehow, I wouldn't want to leave the impression that we're forgetting other parts of the city as well. So let me highlight a couple of other items in the southeast. So, of course, the southeast is our target area right now. So Belmont Fallon is our, is our target area. And of course, most recently, the Carillion Clinic in partnership with the schools and others opened up the Lift Clinic at the Fallon Park School. We also have, and I didn't highlight this, but we have a housing initiative in here as well, which is about two and a half, $3 million going toward affordable housing led by Habitat and other partners. That's focused in our target areas, so that will predominantly take place in the southeast. Of course, one of my recommended projects is another $2 million project in the southeast coming out of the target area as well. So those are a few examples of projects that are actually identified for, for the southeast as well. So we've tried, I think the advisory panel did a very good job of being aware of both the need and the disparities, but also a kind of a geographic representation of where those needs existed so that we didn't overly concentrate or overly ignore any particular areas we tried to make these transformational investments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Bob. That was a great summary of where we are, and thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and all the citizens who helped with that. That was a monumental effort. I wanted to follow up on a couple of things. When you were talking about people, there was one area, Star City Works, the Western Virginia Workforce Development Board, $3 million. I'm convinced that when we have high concentration areas of poverty, one of the things we need to focus on is reducing that poverty through opportunity. And instead of thinking about adding jobs or workforce training in general, really focusing that. So I think, when I think about, for example, Lansdowne, high concentration area of poverty, and, and some of our other housing communities, but even in the northwest sector, I think part of the reason that people are not seeing or feeling the transformation is because they're not seeing or feeling it in their own lives. And until they can connect with opportunity and restore some of that hope, we can talk numbers all we want to. So I'm curious about the workforce development. Do they have a really clear strategy on, on how to bring jobs into the Melrose Orange Corridor, along Salem Boulevard, to Lansdowne, to, to some of these other areas where, where people are looking for employment, taking out, you know, taking the transportation out of the equation, rather than saying, well, there are plenty of jobs, which there are, and, and how can you get to them? How can we bring more of those jobs into the places where we're seeing the highest concentration?
Yes, this is really targeted to do things that the Workforce Development Board typically can't do with the normal federal. Normally, what they do is they basically have to wait for somebody to walk in the door and apply for benefits. This allows them to be more proactive, both with the businesses, the employers, as well as with the prospective employees. So that's exactly what this is geared towards. So I'll give an example of, and I, I don't know enough about any of the credentials or certifications that are, what I'm about to talk about, so I'll talk in generalities. But, so someone that is either unemployed or underemployed in one of those areas where, where you are, obviously, we know in this community, we have a major growth sector around health and wellness. Carillion, at one point, had as many as 1,700 jobs across their system open. So obviously, there's a gap for them to find employment. So obviously, there's a gap for them to find employees, and there is obviously the need for folks to actually either gain employment or better employment. So obviously, people aren't going to suddenly wake up one day and be a nurse. But there are entry-level certifications that with just a little bit of additional training and attention and opportunity, they can actually make that first inroad into that area. And then, once in, then they have the opportunity to continue their education with that employer. That's an area, an example. So that's why we're targeting certain industries, construction, health and wellness, biomedical, those type things. We know those are both the growth industries in our area where we're focusing our attention and where we have strong employers, nonprofit and for-profit, and also because we know that those jobs, not only are they strong, but those jobs have the potential to grow in those jobs. They're not places where you go and that's the end of it. You know, you can get a job in places that pays pretty well, and that's it. That's the job you're going to do for the rest of your life. It doesn't actually have that growth potential. So that's where the focus is with these. So yes, it's both finding out from the employers where the gaps in that skill set are, and then going to where those employees may be, or where those future employees may be, and what are their gaps, and how do you close those with training, education, and those types of things. So yes, that is exactly what the program is for and is intended to accomplish. And I'd be happy, once Morgan Romeo has it kind of more up and running, because this has been a couple of months that we've had it approved with them, I'm sure she'd be happy to come here and talk in more detail about kind of some of the things that are coming up with it and stuff as well.
That'd be good.
Because it will be a program run by them. You know, we basically, they've got an MOU with us on what they're going to deliver, and then they run the program. And so I'd be happy to have them come and speak with you. Once they're, I think it needs to be far enough in, they have something to kind of talk about, but I think it would be worth doing.
Yeah, thank you.
And I remembered what the question was. The Eureka Center, so what we're doing with the design, once the designer is on board, that is then when engagement will begin on the design of the center. So there'll be a lot more conversation about the design with the neighborhood and with the surround, with the users ultimately, people who are using it and might use it as well.
I wanted to see where we are with the land bank. I know we've gotten some loopholes or some barriers removed legislatively, but we, you know, we started this, we got approval to do this several years ago, and I'm curious to know what kind of movement there is, and what that's going to look like for some of our neighborhoods that could really benefit from that program.
Yeah, I'll maybe give you two answers, and one of the answers is, I will have to get information from the land bank to provide to you all where they are currently. We did, through this effort, through the housing effort that I mentioned just a few moments ago, another piece of that was actually a financial investment in the land bank, so that they could acquire, I think at that time, they were looking to acquire as many as 13 properties, to be able to actually then work with their partners on getting those redeveloped and put back onto, out into the market, and I'll need to get an update from them on that. And I'll forward that to, obviously, to all of you, because we have closed some of those loopholes, but that was really so that the land bank could actually more competitively acquire a property that had come up on tax sales or was about to. This actually was funding made available to them to go buy those out on the market and acquire those properties, rehabilitate them with their partners, and then get them back out there.
Well, and I think it would be good for the residents and citizens of the city to hear that kind of an update as well.
How did they, yeah, I'm sorry, if the citizens were to hear it, you were going to bring that back to us, is there a way they can do an actual presentation like we?
Yeah, I mean, we could, what we could do is try to figure out with a couple of these larger initiatives, maybe having some presentations come here and talk about what they've been.
Yeah, because we'll get it, but if they were to get it, you know, as well, that would be really good. I'm sorry, Joe, thank you.
No, that's.
Yeah, I think all of those agencies, as they make progress on these, would be more than happy to come and share with you what they're accomplishing.
A couple of quick things. Under governance, there were two items that were part of the original goals, leadership development and capacity building, and then community navigators. Can you talk a little bit about?
I started with the community navigator one, because we ended up actually not pursuing that one. There was, if you remember, early on, this was true in the CARES Act, too, early on, there was this thought that there was going to be the need for folks to aid different individuals, to try to find the assistance that was likely to become available, be it small businesses or others. And what we actually found was that there was so much publicity about these programs and so much known about them, and to some degree, to the federal government's credit, really, the process was pretty streamlined, that it just didn't, it didn't really become necessary to have those navigators. So we actually didn't end up funding anything associated with those. The other one, what was the other one, Joe, you mentioned?
The leadership development.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, and that is an initiative that we refer to as the Neighborhoods of Opportunity. So that was, if you remember, when that worked its way through, there were two objectives with that effort. One was to, in the Northwest and Southeast neighborhoods, to address further health disparities. So a lot of partners in the community have worked for a number of years in addressing health outcomes in those areas, to some degree of success. Well, those same partners, so we're working in this with Carillion, as well as United Way, and the National League of Cities. And so they came together and said, we want a way in which we can advance this in a more sustainable manner and make a bigger difference. So what that basically, what that's actually ending up being is an effort at actually taking the interventions that are possible to advance health outcomes directly to the residents. So what we've been doing over the last few months is actually meeting with all the partner agencies that deliver services in those areas, in preparation for meetings with the neighborhoods, with the residents in those areas. And the funding is actually then to help, when they identify out of those interventions, when they identify things that they believe will have the biggest impact on promoting and advancing health outcomes, to be able to actually use those dollars to catalyze those fundings. Along the way, the reason it's listed as a leadership, because along the way, the intention is to actually empower these folks in those neighborhoods to assume leadership roles. And, you know, the best example I can give to this always, and I know she doesn't like me always using her as an example, but it's Sunny. Sunny Perviance in Southeast is a perfect example of that, where someone from within the neighborhood has stepped up and actually taken a leadership role, and actually been appointed to a number of boards and commissions. This is to help do that, but in the area of health outcomes. So we are a few months into that process with the partners, and I think we're probably about two months away from actually beginning to engage with the neighborhoods. So there'll be a lot more information of that coming forward.
The last two things I have, and I don't know really where this would tie in, but it came to mind for me under the previous governance commitments and expenditures, talking about cybersecurity and city IT, is really about municipal building security, and we bring this up on a regular basis, and I know there are challenges with that. But with the recent move of the juvenile protective orders to the municipal building and away from the courthouse, that's presented some challenges for them. And I just want to make sure, I don't want to be in a position where we are reacting to an incident. So I'm wondering if some of this, some dollars can be shifted toward really looking at best ways to address that, not only for the additional security risks that may present themselves with the construction going on at the courthouse, but also with just ongoing security concerns here at the municipal building.
And that, you know, and we've, I know, talked about this quite a bit, I mean, that's an ongoing challenge in this building, just because of its age, as well as its sort of the lack of accessible routes and how you work those in. But yes, we certainly can and will continue to look at those opportunities, and if any of these lend themselves to that, you know, of course, we have placed throughout the building, obviously, the security cameras that are in place, we've got physical security in the building, so we will continue to explore that. And it's possible that we would come back and look at some of this to say, hey, can we actually look at using this? We also could use year-end savings or other kinds of things as well. It's how we funded some of those projects previously, but we really don't yet have a comprehensive solution because of the type of building this is, and the fact that we've got to keep the building open to the public.
Right.
And that makes it complicated. It's not like some locations, even like the courthouse, where you can pretty much shut down access to the building and really limit what you allow in. I doubt we'd get away with, for example, not allowing cell phones into the municipal building, but they can in the courthouse for obvious reasons. But yes, I think it's something we can continue to look at.
And the last thing I'd like to suggest, and this could be another briefing, but I know there's just a tremendous amount of work going on with our homeless service providers to address the issues around homelessness. And we're all, you know, we all get feedback, and we all hear stories about, you know, encampments popping up, and I still think it's worth pursuing a public-private partnership to do some kind of outdoor shelter program. But I think it would be helpful for people to know the good things that are happening, even with what appears to be a growing challenge. You know, people are getting housed, we are seeing the fact that a lot of people who are living outdoors also are chronically homeless, so they have more severe mental health issues. And it's, unless you have that 24/7 permanent supportive housing, it's nearly impossible to keep someone housed or sheltered. So I think it would be helpful to hear, and we have the new point in time, which is, which revealed that we have more people unsheltered, and they're younger, they're veering younger. So that's a request, but also, I think, maybe it's my own frustration, because I know that we support these efforts, and we hear from people, well, local government's not doing anything. Well, it's not true, but I think the challenge is, how do we convey that information in a way that reaches as many people as possible?
Yeah, and I think, you know, you all know this, I mean, obviously, in the last 10 to 12 years, the number of individuals experiencing homelessness in our community has declined dramatically, and it's through the actions, both of what you all have done, what the city has done, but more importantly, what have all of those collaborators have done, whether they're shelters, the service providers, and so on. What has increased in the last year or two have been the number of those that are homeless, which is lower than it was previously, that are unsheltered. That number has increased, and that's why it's more visible in the community as well. But yes, I actually think that, you know, the continuum of care, of course, is in the process of updating the strategic plan that has resulted in those changes in homelessness over the years, and I think it would be ideal for them to come and explain both what the new strategic, once they're far enough into it, what the new strategic plan identifies for the next five to 10 years, and what they've accomplished over the last five to 10 years in the area of homelessness. So certainly, we'll talk with them about doing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. Actually, everyone is more or less has talked about what I was going to bring up, so I'm not going to reiterate it. However, I did have a couple of questions with regards to one being on Eureka Center. And you mentioned that we were adding to $5 million because of inflammationary costs. My question is, and I think we are at the beginning stages, how far along will we be before you'll be able to report to the public where we actually are?
Sure. So, yes, that first step will come once a designer is actually secured. We haven't even hired a designer yet, so we're in the process now of interviewing those design firms. Once they're selected, then we'll publicly talk about the engagement program that will then fall into place, so that people can be involved in the design as we work our way through. That's actually not very far away, because we're, I mean, we, last week, when this came up with the, two weeks ago, when it came up regarding what everybody thinks the cost projections are, that was during those interviews with those firms. So we're getting very close to actually securing those firms.
Well, that's good, because I know the public keeps hearing about a new rec center, but don't know when the rec center is going to come.
And remember, this is probably, this project and probably the grocery project are the two that make, that keep me up at night, because these are both construction projects that actually, you know, that clock I mentioned?
Yes.
You know, these are the ones we've got to make sure that get underway, so that we can actually get them completed in the timeframe that we have available.
That would be good. And I think, and I'm glad to hear that there was additional money for the tree cannon, because we spoke on that at the last meeting or the meeting before, with regards to the heat allowance, especially in the Northwest. So I hope that we'll be looking at some places, especially in the Northwest.
Yeah, we'll be relying on the study that has been shown to many of you, that Stormwater Utilities did, where it identifies those hotspots. That'll be kind of our starting point of where we start with those plantings, and then we have to narrow in, where do those go? Does it make sense on street trees? Does it make sense in parks? May even make sense to provide trees for private property, so that folks can actually plant trees. Don't know what that might look like, but we'll start with that.
But that's good, that's good. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Thank you, sir. I believe I was coming into the, back into the room when you were talking about the Roanoke River, Wasina. What was the criteria to allocate the funds to that?
Yeah, so that one, if you, in one of the opportunity areas for the places, there was identification for a, what was called an outdoor, a regional outdoor recreation amenity. Early on in COVID, of course, everybody will recall how much everything ramped up, the use of greenways, the use of our parks, all those, and that was true across the country. And so there has been a push to add recreational, outdoor recreational amenities. You all know me well enough to know, I don't like just pulling projects kind of out of the air, that I feel like they ought to be grounded in something that has gone through a process. And there was a process four or five years ago that actually looked at the Roanoke River and locations to place other, parts of our Blue Way program, and places to locate these. So it identified one at Wasina, one at Explore Park, and kind of an offshoot of one in the Tinker Creek area, which really ended up not being viable, based on the creek itself as well. It actually is those two, plus some other outdoor amenities, that we submitted to the USEDA for the grant application, because they were funding very large projects. We didn't get selected for that. I hope that if we proceed with this project in Wasina, I hope that similarly, Roanoke County will proceed with something at Explore Park, so that it actually has more than just this particular feature. The advantage, there's a couple of advantages, but one of the advantages of doing the Wasina location where it is, is it's in proximity to the Greenway, it's in proximity to Wasina Park, and it's in proximity to the newly acquired building that we just purchased, which is the old Richardson-Wayland Electric. So there's an opportunity to do some additional activities that are associated with it. But it really is driven by this need to continue to increase outdoor activities that contribute to our economic development, as well as build off of some plan that actually has been identified. So that's how it was arrived.
Well, the reason that I was asking, I was thinking about Thrasher Park, and I thought maybe the same could be used, the same criteria could be used to finish bringing in sidewalk into the park?
Yeah, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be for that. It wouldn't be for the outdoor piece of it. That would be probably under the infrastructure pieces that we have. And I think you could probably use infrastructure to connect to a park with sidewalks with it and stuff as well, but it wouldn't be under this category. It would be under that, you know, I said, hold that $5 million till we can do later and find out if there's infrastructure projects. That might be a possibility in that location as well. I will not lose track of that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? A minute back. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you all, I appreciate it, and we will continue to work on Phase One and get to work on Phase Two as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Everything will be received and filed, briefing. All right, well, now the M2, item number eight, the Vice Mayor and I have to climb the mountain here pretty soon, I think we can work through it. Items recommended for action. Item number one is an amendment of the city code to allow reinstatement of the real property rehabilitation exemption for commercial and mixed-use real property laws due to non-payment of real estate taxes. There's an ordinance.
Ms. York.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining subsection C of section 32-98.1. Eligibility, Division 5. Exemption of Certain Rehabilitated Real Property. Article 2. Real Estate Taxes Generally, Chapter 32. Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended, to allow for reinstatement of real property rehabilitation tax exemption for commercial and mixed-use buildings in instances where such exemption is lost due to non-payment of real estate taxes, fees, and charges, upon payment of such real estate taxes, fees, and charges. Dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title and providing an effective date.
Well, thank you. Any discussion? For members of council. Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number two on the actions, items recommended for action, is the deappropriation of VDOT revenue-sharing funds for revenue-sharing funds for the Graybill Road/Gilford Avenue drainage improvement project. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to deappropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation for Graybill Road-Gilford Avenue Drainage Improvement Project, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 capital projects fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion by members of council? Seeing hurrying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number three, execution of a proposed joint use agreement between the City of Roanoke and the Roanoke City School Board. There's an ordinance. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designate to enter into an agreement between the City of Roanoke and the school board of the City of Roanoke in order to enhance the cultural, recreational, athletic, and educational opportunities offered to the citizens of the City of Roanoke, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? All right.
I just have a question, if I could, sorry. And I mentioned this to the city attorney, but I do have to ask it again. Back in September of 2007, there was a joint services agreement with the schools, and there was also at that time, a committee formed, and Mr. Best Pitch was the council member on, selected to serve, as well as Ms. Price being the alternate member with the schools, but I don't think they have been active, and if they have, I don't think they have updated their list. And my question is, will this agreement have any effect on the joint services committee?
I don't believe it does.
Okay.
But I can work with the clerk and ensure that we do update that.
Okay.
Joint Services Committee.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, very open.
Any other question, discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. All right, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments he may have.
No further comments, thank you.
All right, item number B is the, is the city attorney. Item number one, the amendment of the city code to update Article 4 Personnel Management and Practices in Article 3 Officers and Employees. There's an ordinance. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending Article 4 Personnel Management and Practices of Chapter 2 Administration Code of the City of Roanoke as amended and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion? Did you have?
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, remember, we presented this last meeting for council, and taking council's comments, we did amend section 2-61 to, or left the existing language so that these matters will go through the Pepsi Panel the way they always have. The only thing that we have done is also created a 30-day comment period on changes to the POPs.
Okay.
All other changes remain the same.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments, members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and that first ordinance passed, there's a second ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending Article 3 Officers and Employees of Chapter 2 Administration Code of the City of Roanoke as amended and dispensing with the second reading of, second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hurrying none, Madam Clerk, call the roll on this ordinance.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. Item number two is an amendment of the city code to update Chapter 12 Fire Prevention and Protection. There are also two ordinances. First ordinance, can I get a motion? Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance deleting in its entirety Article 3 Fire Alarm Systems of Chapter 12 Fire Prevention and Protection Code of the City of Roanoke as amended and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. The second ordinance. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining Article 2 Fire Prevention Code, Chapter 12 Fire Prevention and Protection by amending section 12-19 Amendments of the Code of the City of Roanoke as amended for the purpose of updating and clarifying the city's fire prevention and protection ordinance, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number three is an amendment of the city code to update section 24-2.1 Prohibition of Firearms on City Property. There's an ordinance. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Roanoke as amended by amending section 24-2.1 Prohibition of Firearms on City Property to Chapter 24 Public Buildings and Property Generally to Add Certain Properties of the City of Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority, establishing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I do have a question.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Spencer, we spoke briefly last week when we were presented with it initially. Did the Housing Authority opt not to include their common areas?
They had a discussion with their council. One change they did make listed each of the properties on here, so you'll see that change. In talking with their legal counsel, those common areas will require federal approval to do that.
Okay.
They wanted to move forward on this now, and that if the board wishes to move forward, they'll work on that. He did warn me that that may take up to a year to get that federal approval before they had come back. That's one of the reasons why they wanted to move forward with what they have now.
Well, I certainly understand why they would want to go ahead and expedite this portion of it, I was just curious why it was not included. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. Item number four is an amendment of the city code to update Chapter 23 Police, Article 3 Security Alarms. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending Article 3 Security Alarms of Chapter 23 Police Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number eight is reports of committees. A report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request, Donald Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is the spokesperson. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth Federal and Private Grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item B is report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which city councils serve as liaisons or appointees. Are there any comments by members of council that they'd like to make from the boards and commissions that they may serve on? All right, hurrying none. Then we'll move right on to number nine, which is unfinished business, we have none. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, we have none this afternoon. Item number 11 is motion of miscellaneous business. Oh, did you, okay, Ms. Price?
Yes. Just a reminder that our annual youth summit is this Saturday at Washington Park, the upper level, and I do want to remind folks and our listening public that our Roanoke City Schools is providing transportation, which we are extremely appreciative of. Buses will begin picking up students at 10:00 AM, also running at 1:00 and 3:00, and the last run is at 5:30. And the pickup starts, locations are Fishwick Middle School and Patrick Henry, and also at Melrose Library and William Fleming. So we've tried to think of everything, so there are no barriers for anyone to say, "Well, I couldn't get there," and transportation is an issue. So hope to see tons of people, and don't forget, there's lots of food for our young people. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Best Pitch?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your request, and despite some of my better judgment, I have agreed to continue chairing our legislative committee through the end of December. And so I just wanted to mention that I've spoken to the city attorney and the city manager about having the first meeting for this upcoming session at the first meeting of city council in July. What I would like to do with everyone's concurrence is to invite our advisors in Richmond, Mr. Jordan and Ms. Bateman, to join us by Zoom on that morning to sort of give us an overview of where they see the general assembly heading right now, what are the issues that they think we should be paying attention to, and anything that they might offer to us. They've been so extremely helpful, as I think everyone knows. And then the second thing is to just make sure that all of you start thinking about issues that you would like for us to discuss for possible inclusion in our legislative package for the 2023 session. So it's just the beginning part of it, and we'll have a number of other meetings as we move through the rest of the summer and the fall, but I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar screen so we can start being ready for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch, and thank you for your willing to serve out through December of 22. I appreciate that.
It's 194 more days, Mr. Mayor, in case anyone's counting.
He's not counting.
All right.
And, Mr. Mayor, I did have one thing.
All right, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. I attended the Noble Neighborhood Association meeting last night, and the chairman there, the president of the association, Clay, I want to make sure I pronounce his name correctly, McClintock, presented me with a letter that he wanted to share with the council as well as the administration from the citizens and the residents, the citizens of Roanoke and residents of the neighborhood that are being affected by the Wimsen Road project, and that he felt that, or they feel that they're not being heard, and they wanted the council to know about their concerns. So I have the original copy that I will ask the clerk to make copies of and share with the council through miscellaneous, and to give a copy to the manager. But there's also about 3,000-plus signatures, but you don't have to make the copies of those, but I just want them for the record.
Okay.
But I did share with them that, so that he didn't have to come, that I would present that to the council.
Thank you.
And I'll get that to you. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that the second Grocery's Not Guns buyback event will be Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Melrose Community Action Center, 1427 Melrose, which is right across the street from Melrose Park. And I'm going to use that segue to ask Bob, could you please share an update on the refurbishment of the basketball courts at Melrose Park?
I can share with you up till last week, I don't know if there's been any new updates, so as you all know, you know, Melrose is one of the courts that we're replacing along with others. When the crews, the contractor took up the surface of the existing court, it was learned that there was no subsurface under it, as there needs to be. So, of course, they had to come in, that delayed it, because then they had to go get the material to actually do that, they laid it down, and then someone chose to drove across, drive across the compacted subsurface, which basically destroyed the work that the contractor had done, so contractor had to rework that, and, of course, this was also during the period where we were having quite a bit of rain. I believe now they've got fencing up to try to actually control access to it. First, they had to wait for it to compact again, then they had to wait for it to dry out, so their next step then was to come in and actually lay the surface. That's as of a week or so ago, I don't know an update currently, but I can get that as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Bob, do you know when we'll be able to meet with the airport commissioners and executive director?
Yeah, I had a meeting with the executive director last week to actually talk about other items, and one of the items I brought up was this idea that, you know, you all have, once a year, you have a joint meeting with the airport authority, and we're contemplating, actually trying to see if we can orchestrate it so that the joint meeting actually takes place at the airport, so that you can actually see some of the improvements that are going on there. So we don't have a date yet, but we're starting to actually formulate kind of those options that we'll present to you all to figure out what works, what works best, but I think there definitely, there's some logistics issues we have to work out, like, do we continue the meeting there, or we, most likely, we'll have to delay so that we can actually get back here, but there are enough improvements at the airport that it would probably be worth having the conversation, and hopefully, the idea is to sync it up with them getting to the point of actually completing their master plan so they can share that with you all as well, so.[1733.73]
Sounds good, thank you.
Sure.
All right, let me just note for the council, a number of events going on this weekend, especially on Saturday. At eleven o'clock, we have the youth summit that starts. At the same time, we have a parade downtown, Miss Virginia Parade, and there'll be a lot of visitors in our city because the pageant is Saturday night. And later that day, we also have a, well, the gun buyback program that'll be going on starting at eleven o'clock. And then on the same day, we're going to have, Vice Mayor has an event that will be going that day, but hers doesn't start until four o'clock. And then the pageant starts later. And if you all want to attend, let me know on that. And matter of fact, those events start this afternoon up at the mountain, up at the Dyer residence. And we'll have a parade and a lot of things going on for this week. But be aware, again, as we've had this summer, or this spring, and now summer, a lot of visitors in our city, a lot of things that's going on. I think it's good for our city. Let me just mention one other thing. As you all know, the C I double A, which is the Central Olympic League Athletic Association, plays their championship football game. It's the Division Two Championship Game every November. We still, along with the Blue Ridge, Virginia's Blue Ridge, we have a contract with them. They put on a youth football clinic free of charge, and this will be held on July nineteenth from six to seven-thirty. The coaches, all of the college coaches, will be here, and they're bringing one player from their team. And so because of NCAA rules, they're not allowed to get the high school players here, but they want to work with the middle school kids. And that's a good opportunity to go out and be involved and learn some football from these college coaches. And that's being done, and I think it's a real good thing. It's being sponsored by the C I double A Football Conference, and Virginia's Blue Ridge is a sponsor this year. So if you know any middle school kids that want to learn football from high school, I mean, from the college coaches, and some of the athletes they're bringing here are highly rated on the NFL draft chart. So you can register now. The deadline to register is July the eleventh. And if you need some information, you'll get a T-shirt and a dinner. And that's on July nineteenth at the Salem Stadium. So I'd like for as many children as we can to go out, as we can, go out and be a part of that. I know there'll be a number of students from Salem, and we'd like to get a number of students from Roanoke. And we usually do get a number. But COVID has thrown everything behind a little bit. So we want to go back, and I look forward to that happening, July nineteenth at the Salem Stadium. And you get a nice T-shirt with C I double A football and talk to some coaches and players on a college level. All right, there are no vacancies. And right now, our council, there's no other business. Our council--
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I believe the newest member of the clerk's office has been patiently waiting. I believe the city clerk was going to introduce--
She did.
She did. Was I missing that? I'm sorry. I kept seeing her sitting there. I thought she had not been introduced. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
She's been introduced to each one of us. And--
Arrived yet, Ms. Moon?
Okay, no problem. I thought it was during the council meeting because I was over there when they said for her to come over to be introduced, and I was waiting to hear her--
Yeah, Jennifer--
And I was waiting to hear her last name.
Her name is Jennifer McReynolds.
Okay.
And we are so happy to have her. She's a great addition to our staff. And she comes to us by way of H and C Coffee. She was the office manager there. So we're happy to have her.
Thank you. Thank you for the reintroduction.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, so what Ms. Price, you said, if all hearts and minds are clear, we're going to go into recess until our meeting tonight at seven PM. Thank you.